Budget, they can include that number and we also need to know if if that request seems reasonable. The way we do this, and I know the board may know this, but also for the public, we send out to all our departments their requests, what they want for the next year, why they want it, and that comes back to us. And as Mr. White and the commissioners build their budget, they do the same thing. They have the sheriff, they have the school system, they have all these folks making requests. So of course they would like a number. Mr. Murphy and I talked with Mr. White and what he wants in March as close as we can is a number. He does not want the the entire budget because of course we wouldn't give that until it's the board budget and the board has approved. The budget largely is based on the ADM, the Average Daily Membership for the School System. That's how teachers are allotted, that's how dollars are allotted from the state. So the the budget number we're working on for next year, and this is all online at DPI, and I think I've I've shared that site with the board, is eleven thousand eight hundred. They come to that number based on the best two, one of two months. The unfortunate thing is it'll be based on this year, and if we have students that come in or come back, which we are seeing from other choices that previously made, those students are not counted in that count. But if they reach a certain number, and I think it's over a hundred or so, they will revise that and we will make that request if we have the change of that many students. But just so you know, next year's budget is built on this year's student enrollment. On that site at DPI, it has every PSU's enrollment and it has every single school in the state of North Carolina. If anyone needs some reading to do late at night, that's is really interesting to go and look at those numbers. This number, of course, is only revised, as I said, with a substantial increase in students, but does not change for students who enroll or return to our school system during the year or students that will return next year. Lastly, certainly not the the least thing on my list, but January is School Board Appreciation Month. A dedicated school board is necessary to ensure a quality public education for our communities. These community leaders volunteer countless hours to set policy, make tough decisions, and prioritize the success of every student. The commitment of the Board of Education ensures that our schools have resources, guidance, and the vision needed for our school system to thrive. As a small token from Craven County Schools, you have a little notepad that includes sticky notes and all kinds of things before you today for you to take notes and use as you need in your role as a board member. Please join us in saying thank you to our Board of Education because public schools does the public good. We're up. Unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Do we have any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Next, we go on to our successful students and Craven Virtual Academy.
Good morning. I was pushing the button on the back. Sorry. Good morning, Board. Good morning, everyone. Today, we're going to do a brief overview of Craven Virtual Academy. Ms. Mickey Warren is here today and she's going to do the presentation. I'm going to step in and talk about the funding slide, but other than that, I want to turn this over to Ms. Warren.
Good morning. A little taller than her. Good morning. Congratulations or thank you for serving and Appreciation Month. We appreciate you. I'm Mickey Warren, Principal of Craven Virtual Academy. I've been the principal. This is my third year there. I worked there the first year as a teacher and now I've been working with my students for three years. That is our motto and was in my office, but my office is a little too small to have that in my office now. I have moved over, so if. Thank you. So we this year have two staff members, myself and just recently I was able to hire an administrative assistant, Ms. Blackman. Thank you for that. So she is a godsend to me, but there are only two of us. So that makes things a little bit difficult for me sometimes. There's a lot on my plate. I also, not only am I working with Craven Virtual Academy, I also am the Director of Aspire. That is where I'm located. So there is there's a lot on my plate as it is with all of my colleagues as principals, but that is that is who makes up our team. So little background. So we began in 2021. We evolved, of course, from COVID and then we had Craven Live. I was a part of Craven Live the first year I was at Vanceboro Farm Life. I worked with students in third grade. But then as Craven Virtual evolved, we started our first year in 2021. We had thirteen employees. We had counselor. We have PE teacher. We had, of course, a principal, a data manager slash secretary slash bookkeeper. We had teach an elementary teacher. We had two elementary teachers at that time because we were, of course, serving different, we were serving a different amount of students. So our location was at Commerce Drive. The second year, we had fifteen teachers. Third year, fifteen teachers as well. And then the fourth year, this year, two teachers. Well, two staff, I should say. Our funding was ESAR funding, ESAR funding, and of course, ESAR Cliff has gone away, so we are PRC 131. The first year, our school performance was not what we wanted it to be. We were low performing and we did not meet growth. The second year, we were able to turn that around. We were a C school, moved up to a C school and did meet growth. Again, the same thing last year and of course this year, we will be awaiting our scores. We are looking a little bit different, so we will see what we look like at the end of this year and into October. So the first year we began, we served grades three through twelve, and we had one hundred and seventy-nine students. You'll notice the next year, we also served grades three through twelve, but we dropped down to one hundred and thirty-three students. The biggest thing there was the the mask mandate. We have we have many, many students who were coming to Craven Virtual because they weren't their parents and the students were unhappy. Multiple reasons. Masks were one thing, but their health was another concern. And so that is one of the reasons. And of course, as the pandemic was easing off, our students, many of those students went back to the traditional school. And then the next year, one hundred and twenty-six, last year, one hundred and twenty-six, and then this year, we have one hundred and seventeen. I did have thirty-five students who requested reassignment and I have except, I will be taking on or did take on nineteen new students. They started with me yesterday. Nineteen more. So and we are now, next year, we will serve grades six through twelve. This year, we are five through twelve. So we've taken off a grade the last three years. And so next year, we will be middle school and high school. We will not have an elementary school. So at minimum, this year, we are serving grades five through twelve. Our elementary classes are all live classes with the exception of their electives. So they have reading, math, science, and social studies. They have live classes Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They have a set schedule. The elementary classes are the only ones that they actually can choose different. There are two separate times that they can choose from. They can choose nine o'clock reading or one o'clock. There are two different, so it that is more flexible only for the elementary. We're not able to do that for the middle and high, but the elementary students do have that luxury that they can choose. Let's say they have a doctor's appointment and they cannot go to their nine o'clock language arts. They can catch it that afternoon. So our elementary students have those four classes and then they have art and they have health and PE. Those classes are at their own pace. They do not, they have a teacher. They do not have a live session for those two classes. Our middle school classes have live classes for language arts, math, and eighth grade science. So anything that has an EOG has or EOC has a live class, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for an hour. So our sixth graders have live math and language arts. Seventh graders, same thing, math, live language arts and math. And then our eighth graders, because they have a science EOG, they have math, science, and language arts. And then high school live classes are for, again, our classes who have an EOC. So it's Math One, Math Three, English Two, and then Biology. Any other course is self-paced. They are doing, now they have a teacher, but they are self-paced. There was somebody. The students have now, our students have access to more courses. We did not have, we had, we could use NCVPS. We have more options now to use NCVPS this semester, but we were finding that our students were a little bit uncomfortable with our NCVPS courses. They were not as successful with those. So with Edmond, they have had a lot more choices, especially our middle schoolers. My middle schoolers had as an elective PE. That is the only choice that they had. And so now they have had Intro to Health Careers, Family and Consumer Science. They have had Middle School Spanish. Mine are taking this semester. This will be the first semester they're taking. They have had Introduction to Individual Sports, Introduction to Group Sports. Let's see what's, I think, and that is for my middle school. So it's made a big difference for my middle schoolers and the difference that they can have. Edmond teachers are a hundred percent North Carolina certified. Many of them are National Board certified, but a hundred percent are North Carolina certified. That is one of the things that we set in place right to begin with. And we do have an Exception Children Services. We do have a Craven, she is paid by Craven County Schools. She lives in Asheville. She is contracted, but and she is phenomenal working with our students, so we are lucky enough. And she was not on my beginning slide and I do apologize for that, but Mrs. Ponder does work with our exceptional children. So we do have a, she is our teacher that works with our students.
So I just want to very quickly talk about the finance. The staffing costs, you can see last year at January, it was six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, a little over that. This year, we're at one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine, the difference in the staffing cost. The curriculum, of course, didn't cost us anything because our staff was using Craven County Schools curriculum. This year, it is, if we take the three hundred and twenty-four five, that's the contracted amount for the entire year. So I split it and said we about one hundred and sixty-two per semester. But it's kind of like, this is, it's kind of like your home equity loan, if you have one. This is the amount you have and every class you take is deducted from that amount. So I do not anticipate using the entire three twenty-four, three hundred and twenty-four five, but at the very most, that's the most it will cost us. The facilities and utilities, of course, we had ten thousand nine hundred dollars over at Commerce by January of last year. Of course, there's no cost to that because the program is already, is handled online. So right now, they, you guys had wanted a comparison from January twenty-four to January of twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-five. So you can see there's a significant savings between last year at this time and this year at this time.
So because we're using Edmond, everything is different this year. I really, I really wanted to hear how the parents and the students felt about it. So I sent a survey for a few weeks, shared it in my newsletter that I send every week, and these are the results that I received before Christmas. So eighty-eight point nine percent of my my parents are very satisfied with their child's overall education experience this year, and they would recommend this school to others. That's that's, to me, makes my heart feel very good because you never know what's going to happen. I was very happy with my staff that I had. Of course, Ms. Simmons was my elementary teacher, so obviously very, very happy and they were doing a wonderful job. So I was a little nervous. So I was very happy to hear this from my parents. Seventy-seven point eight are very satisfied with the communication from the Edmond teachers and coach. I should have said earlier, all of my students, Ms. Lee and the leadership, made sure that they have a success coach. So that is, those people are guidance counselors or school counselors. That is their profession. But what they do is they meet with the students. They talk with the students. The students, they have to have two-way conversations with the students and their and their parents and that's that coach once a month. So that is make sure, but they do it once a week. This week, their big thing is they'll be saying, hey, you have a new schedule. How are you going to get these things done? What does it look like? And so that is one of the things that they are working with. Eighty-eight point nine percent are very satisfied with the school's academic curriculum in terms of its variety. Eighty-eight point nine percent believe the curriculum meets the needs of the diverse learners. That's not just our EC teach kids. That's all of our students. As you can imagine, I have a, my students come to us for a reason. They have some very diverse needs. So eighty-eight point nine percent of our parents are are satisfied and happy with that. The same are satisfied with the quality of instruction that their child is receiving. Very happy with that. A hundred percent. And this is a big deal because one of the things people like to say is, well, how are you meeting their social needs? A hundred percent of the parents believe that their social emotional development is supported. A hundred percent. I just, that just makes me, as a principal, very proud to know that my parents feel like their kiddos are getting what they need and supported. A hundred percent believe CVA promotes a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere. I have, as again, I have a very diverse, as all my colleagues do, but very diverse students. And so I'm very happy that they feel they are in a safe space and that they are heard and seen. And so I am very happy about that. Student surveys, the same, I sent two different surveys, a little bit different questions. Eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent of my students feel that they are satisfied with the teaching methods of their instructors, and that is, that is huge for for kids to say. Huge that almost eighty-six percent are happy with the way that they are being taught. Almost eighty percent believe that their instructors make that tough stuff understandable. Ninety-three percent believe their their instructors address student questions and or concerns, so they feel heard. They feel like someone's listening to them and getting back with them and helping them. Eighty-six percent believe the instructors are approachable and available for help. Eighty-five point seven believe the feedback from the instructors is timely and helpful. And then seventy-one percent believe the feedback from instructors helps them improve their work. So that's something I've shared with my county executive. That's a little bit low. So my students feel like they're getting feedback, but maybe they need a little bit more constructive feedback or specific feedback. And then ninety-two point nine percent believe that course materials are helpful and relevant. And then seventy-one percent believe they've learned what was expected of them to learn. I'm not sure if that's because they weren't sure what they should have been learning or weren't sure what they, what the expectations were. I don't know. I have to have to talk with my kids and see about that. What kind of questions you have for me?
Do we have any questions?
I do. First, I want to say, Ms. Warren, that I've heard very complimentary things from parents about your leadership and your responsiveness. And I know I appreciate that and I'm sure that this board also appreciates that. I've also heard some concerns about the Craven Virtual Academy. One, so one was around the curriculum not pacing with the North Carolina standard course of study in subjects not including math. I've heard complimentary things about the math pacing and the math being on track for the grade level. So I heard, I've heard that concern from multiple parents. And when I heard that, I asked if I could take a look at the curriculum for the Craven Virtual Academy. And so we were able to get access to that, everyone on the board. And I am not an expert in any subject. I'm an accountant by profession, but I chose to look at eighth grade social studies. That is a subject that I think I know a lot about. And so I looked into eighth grade social studies at the curriculum and noticed that the Virtual Academy eighth grade social studies had zero alignment with North Carolina standards in that, for the benefit of the public, North Carolina standards, eighth grade social studies is North Carolina history and North Carolina social studies. Teaches our kids about the economy, about the history, about the geography, all things North Carolina. I couldn't even find the word North Carolina in the Virtual Academy eighth grade social studies curriculum. And that was really concerning to me as a North Carolinian and as a North Carolina taxpayer.
Yes, ma'am. So I addressed that in August. Yes, ma'am. Because so I, so I went through all of the curriculum for all of my students. And so in August, I addressed that with the county executive. Actually, it was probably at the end of July. And so I shared that too. I said, our so, our eighth graders, they cannot, because it says US history, right? And so I said, we have to have North Carolina history. Here are, here are our standards. Here is what must be in there. So they made a new course for us. And so you guys cannot access that. I can. So my eighth graders do not take the US history. They, when I pull down and I assign their class, it is North Carolina and US history only for for Craven, for us. So the rest of North Carolina does not do that, but yes, ma'am. So yes, I noticed that too and 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 made sure that we took care of that. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I have a question. Rumor control, trying to understand. Do long-term suspension students get enrolled here and are homebound students enrolled in this academy?
Would you like to?
Yeah. So I want to, I want to make sure that we understand that we use EdMentum for a couple of different things. The, the CVA uses the course catalog that is designed for a virtual school. We do use EdMentum for long-term subs, not long-term subs, long-term suspensions. We also use it for homebound. But, but we don't use, we don't put them in CVA because they may come in and out. CVA is designed for the whole semester or the whole year. So we use, we use a different facet of EdMentum. We use, Dr. Monroe is back there. We use exact, Ed Actions Academy for, for, for CVA. We use Courseware for, there's, there's a couple of different names for it. But we do use EdMentum, the product. That is not part of the funding. We have a separate pot of money that comes out of the CNI budget that we use for the homebound students as well as any students that are long-term subs. I mean, su- suspension. I don't know why I keep saying that. Okay. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's, I mean, can students be placed at CVA? Yes. Dr. Miller, Dr. Monroe, yes, they can be, be placed there, of course. That is their prerogative. And they certainly always have a conversation with me, and it's always in the, the student's best interest when that occurs. But it is not, that is not a, a norm. It is not. My, because my students have a, a, we go through an application process. There are certain requirements they must meet to be able to come to CVA.
Stacey?
So I just, I want to thank you for what you do. And I, I want to give an example of, of why I think this is a really important option for us to offer for our students. In the last few years, we had a student, and, and we have lots of students, obviously, with varying medical needs. We had a student who was really wanting to be in person full time at one of our high schools. And the stress of that was really too much because of the medical issues. And because we have an option like CVA available, we were able to make the student's schedule something that would fit the desire to both be in person part of the time and also to be a virtual student part of the day. And I don't think that there is really a price that we can put on that. I mean, obviously, there are expenses, but having that option available for children with fragile medical needs is a really invaluable thing for us to do. And I think the, the recognition needs to be that the public school system must educate all comers to the best of our ability. That is our constitutional obligation under the North Carolina Constitution. And I think this is one of the ways that we help to do that. So thank you, Ms. Warren, for what you do.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Stacey.
I just want to make one comment about that. So general statute says that we have to have an alternative learning program for children who cannot come into the school and get it the traditional way. So this, in the past, we had a homes, we had a homeschool teacher, and we tried to do everything that way. But since COVID, parents want choices. These children are there because their parents want them in a virtual environment. There's too many options out there. They, these kids wouldn't come back, probably, most of them, to the brick and mortar school. They would choose another virtual option that is not part of Craven County Schools.
Anyone else? I just want to make sure I got everybody first. Anybody else? All right.
I did hear a concern from an elementary school parent, excuse me, about the instruction-led teaching, having some periods of not being available. And I just was curious, when that happens, what is our response to that?
So we did have an issue, and it was specifically with, this past semester with our elementary. There was a security, it, something happened with Zoom. I don't know those kinds of things, but there was a security issue. And so in the effort to protect our students, they stopped having Zoom. So what they did is those teachers recorded their lessons and sent those to the students, and they were available to work with the kiddos. But yes, that did occur. And that's, so that's how we, we were able to combat it, is that the teachers made, let, made videos of their lessons, and they sent that, and they were available to work with them, but they couldn't do a Zoom with them, which is what our elementary. Did not affect our middle and our high school, but it did affect our elementary students. I don't know what that security issue was, but I know that it was in the effort to protect the students, which I wholeheartedly agree with, that that is the effort that they stopped it immediately. So, yes.
Again, I want to tell you, Ms. Warren, that a few parents I've spoken with really appreciate your responsiveness to things. So thank you.
I appreciate it. There's so many things good that I could say, and I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Stacey, I have four mothers, young mothers who will graduate this year. This is a godsend to them. And as you can imagine, your home and your, one of my colleagues shared that unfortunately, a young mother that she had worked with in the past had to fail her courses so that she could do credit recovery in the summer, because you can't take a course and this, you have to fail it first. And that broke my heart. And so I was determined that that would not happen in our school. And so I will have four. I had one last year, and I have four that will graduate this year. And I'm just, that is only for students, but it is really for students that are making a huge difference in a whole bunch of lives. And I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud. This will be the first year that I have students who have been with us for four years, and they'll graduate, and they'll walk across the stage. I'm so proud of them and what they have accomplished. And there are so many different good stories that I can share. I'm just really, from kids who just struggle to get out of their house, because there are, there's, there's some social anxiety there that really affects them physically, and they are flourishing. And they are, they came to me, and, and I had one that this year she will graduate, and I had to sit down with her, and she, I will be honest, she did not meet our requirements. And I was like, you know, sweetheart, I really, you know this is what you're going to have to do. If you want to do this, I told her this last year. And I said, you're going to have to take six courses. You're going to have to, and you're going to have to do a, a course in the summer. And she's like, I, I can do it, Ms. Warren, if you'll just help me out. If you'll just give me a chance. She finished her last two courses, her last four last semester. She was taking one this semester, and she will graduate. And it's just, just those things are, just make a world of difference in their lives. And I'm just, I'm really proud to be able to offer that and keep on helping our students.
Just, I want to thank you for bringing, saying that about Ms. Warren. This, Ms. Warren has been super flexible. When I came to her and I said, okay, this is what it's going to look like. What do you think? And she was like, whatever you need me to do. She has jumped in, had, and done a great job. And we have 128 kids that are benefiting from her on a daily basis. Thank you.
I also just want to say, I really appreciate all the work you've done.
I appreciate it.
And handling both Craven Virtual Academy and Aspire, I know is a lot.
It is. I'm learning a lot. I'm learning a lot.
And I don't think people realize how much that is, and how, how much work there is with that.
I didn't know how much it was either.
But I really do appreciate all your work.
I think, I appreciate that thing.
All right, now District Declared Intent, Vets Gatchel.
Good morning. My name is Vetsy Gatchel. I'm the Director of Student Programming. And I am wearing a couple hats this morning. So the first one is Restart Contact. So one of the things that happens when a restart school hits a certain period of time is that they have to declare their intent for where they're going to go now. So this is going to kind of go through that process with you, and there is a recommendation to follow. All right. So you can see here, these are the outlines of the Continued Authorization Process. We actually began this process last spring where we had to do a comprehensive district self-study. That self-study outlined the support that the restart schools have been given from Craven County Schools since the inception of Cohort Two, which are Oaks Road Academy and Roger Bell New Tech Academy. And that happened in 2018. So that district self-study was kind of a comprehensive outline of the different ways that the support has migrated throughout the years based on the needs of those schools. And also, the schools themselves had to do what was called a school reflection on progress. And this is digging down into the micro layers of where they've used their flexibilities, and how those flexibilities have had positive impact on whether it's subgroup data, behavioral data, attendance data, a lot of the pieces that you don't see that show in a broad achievement score or a growth score. So then after that happens, the North Carolina Office of School Improvement does a review of all of that that has been turned in to them. And they make a recommendation based on all of their guidelines and policies regarding restart to say, this is what you all are recommended to do with those two schools for the next period of five years. And that is given to us that we have to look through and decide, based on what feedback they've given us, what is our intent from that feedback. And that's where we are today, is to look at that district declared intent. So you can see here, if you want to dig a little deeper, and hopefully you got a video that you could see that kind of gave a little bit of background information on restart. But it comes from State Board Policy DSTR 40, and that is part of the reform for recurring low-performing schools. And this is one of four models. It's really the only model that is out there being used, but there are four written in the statute. And it comes from our General Statute 115. So if you look through that, if you can go ahead to the next one, please, you'll see that what we're trying to do is find ways, schools to get out of that recurring low-performing status. So the year one is the first year of implementation. And this is following a planning year where your baseline data is, is collected. This is our start point. And then we're going to go to the end of the five-year period, though you can see there's a six-year tier because of COVID. They made an exception there, to see what were the gains from year one to year five. Now, what that doesn't account for is that during year two, three, or four, and in this case, five, you can have a trajectory that goes up and goes down, and goes up and goes down. And that's why we dig a little deeper in the layers of looking at, when they did their school reflection on progress, what were some of the things that were happening in the micro layers of the different parts of the school's growth. So you can see that with Cohort Two schools, we are now at the part where we're going to approve, be approved for Continued Authorization decisions based on what you all decide today. Go ahead to the next one. Okay. So this is the workflow that happens. Every year, we file a December report. And that December report outlines the progress of what the school has done with achievement, with growth, with subgroup data. And they go through, sorry, okay. They go through the different components to determine where the school is falling and how it's meeting its different pieces. So it's going to look first, and it kind of goes through the flow map. When we first look at that piece at the bottom where you can see, are we recurring low performing? Yes or no? And then that shows you how it feeds through. Then they go through and they look at the different pieces for growth. Then they look at the pieces for achievement. Then they look at subgroups. And then they go to look at flexibilities. So based on where the trajectory of the scores lay, that they will make a decision as to how they're going to recommend for you to proceed. Go to the next one, please. So the recommendation that came back from the state after the data review had twofold. One is Oaks Road Academy has been recommended to reapply for restart status due to their, the way they fell into the flow chart. They were one point less this year than they were last year. And that kept them from meeting the requirements for automatic approval for Continued Authorization. So their recommendation is for them to reapply. The Roger Bell New Tech Academy, however, made, soared through that particular flow chart in all areas, and they are recommended for Continued Authorization. So what's happening now is we have had to do a preliminary district declared intent to accept what is being recommended by the state. And then we bring that, after they reviewed that, to see, are we going with what they say? Are we changing our minds? Then we bring it to you all, and you all determine whether this is the path you would like to proceed. Once that happens, it gets submitted to the state, and then they take it to the state board this spring. Pending the results from the state board, that would be the trajectory that we would follow next year for Cohort Two. Okay, so if you, next slide, please. So this is kind of the timeline, just to show you what we've been doing right now. This is that final one. I'm sharing the recommendations with you now. By February 28, assuming that we will be filling out another application for restart for Oaks Road Academy, that particular document has to be submitted by the end of February. It is already in draft form and pretty close to being ready to go. And then we would submit all of those pieces with the reapplication and the district declared intent to have it on file, and then the state board would meet and let of our final. So this is the recommendation. The recommendation is that we approve the recommendations from the state for our district declared intent, that we reapply for Oaks Road Academy. They've made a lot of really good gains. If you had, if you looked at their five-year trend and you saw the dip that COVID had caused, it was a very, very deep hole that they had to climb out of. And they have been making gains very steadily from that particular period. And then to have Oaks Road, I mean, Roger Bell have Continued Authorization in their status. Who, were you, whatever. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Is it?
You gotta hit red, the whole, blue.
Yeah, I'm pushing the wrong button. I need to go back to first grade and learn how to read. Anyway, is it possible to get a copy of some of the documents you're doing, like the application and the self-studies?
Oh, yes. The, we have all of those on file. I can send those to you. That's no problem. The application itself is still in draft form, but it would not be sent off without the signature of the board chair.
No, I, I get that, but just, and, and when they, so the authorization says that there's specific system and structure changes they want. Are those identified in those documents?
So for the regular Continued Authorization, they can continue with their status quo because what they're doing has shown to be working. With the reapplication, and we say reapplication because they already applied for the status once, it's a little bit more in-depth in terms of what kind of things are going to be done from the district level and at the school level, including different, maybe new flexibilities that might be considered and tried. And those are outlined in the application.
Thank you very much. You can tell I watched the video, right?
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions? Lori?
So Oaks Road has not, in their time, come out of at least a D status? So what happens to a school? At what point do we make a decision on restart as to not restart it or to keep restarting it or?
So I will be honest, last year's Cohort One was the very first cohort that actually went through the Continued Authorization process. So longitudinally, there's not a lot of data to see what happens past this trajectory. I do know that it is something that is monitored by the state, and that if it is not an avenue that we pursue, they could come in and take over and determine how they would like to run the school. I do know that there are other options that also could be considered as school reform models. Again, when I go to my meetings as District Restart Contact, this is the only one they talk about schools using now. I think this is the one that most people flock to in the beginning. And if you watched the video, you saw the trajectory of the numbers of how many were became restart in the very beginning. The, the thing with restart that is a positive is the flexibility that you have with your budget, because you can think out of the box and try different avenues to try to make improvements. And if you look down at the micro data in both of the schools, you can see how that has positively influenced changes within the school. Like I said, whether it's number of out-of-school suspensions, or whether it's attendance, or whatever the focus is on the micro level, that is with the intent to improve the macro level of achievement growth, obviously. So that's, it's a very good question. I don't have a lot of data to support what happens when we get past that. I do know that all of the schools last year in Cohort One, what, if they were not recommended for Continued Authorization, but were recommended for reapplication, were approved by the state board.
Ms. Stacy?
I move that we accept the recommendation as
I move that we accept the recommendation as presented on the screen and approve the district declared intent.
Second.
All in favor, please show by raising your right hand. All right. You're up again.
Okay, so now I'm gonna wear my arts hat. Okay, so in the world of art, they're constantly looking for opportunities to embrace art as a learning experience for students, and also recognize the efforts that many of our students make in trying to build their capacity as an arts student. So to that end, this year in late fall, it was approved that students could have an arts education proficiency endorsement added to their diploma. Okay? Next slide. So an endorsement is not new. There are many different endorsements. You can see the list there on the side. These are all things that acknowledge that a student has done a particular concentration area in their units of study that to align with whatever the state has determined is enough to say, this student has a strength in this area, they've met the requirements for this area. And it usually culminates in the seal that is put on their diploma. It is also something that they can share when they go on to wherever they go beyond high school, to let them know that this is something that I've worked on, this is a special interest of mine in an area in which I'm successful. You can see that a lot of them are really pertaining to more scholarly achievements in the sense of grades or particular types of core courses that they're taking. But the arts, they don't want to be left out, because we have a lot of students that participate in many different art capacities in our high schools, and we want to acknowledge that. So in November, when that was approved, we began our process for what does that look like in Craven County schools? Next slide. So this is what the state says is the endorsement policy. If you'll pay close attention to the part that is embold, this is why I'm here before you today. Most of the things that they require the student to have are pretty straightforward. You need to have this many courses, you need to make this kind of grade on those courses that you do. But there's a second component that's a little different from other endorsements, and that is, we want to acknowledge students who participate in the arts beyond taking classes in the classroom. That could be students who participate in community theater. It could be students who take private lessons or participating groups that are in the community in scene, in their church, in other capacity. That shows an embrace and a love for the arts and an experience that they want to give them credit for. To that end, it is the local board's decision to approve, what do those events look like that we will approve on that list of extracurriculars? So to bring to you, go to the next slide, we've gone through the process, we're going through lots of our different stakeholders in terms of the academic sides of arts and what they see their students participate in. So we've talked with other, I participate in the district arts education leaders meetings, so I've networked with a lot of different counties to find out what you all require. We go to the arts leads, we have an elementary music lead, we have three arts leads for visual arts, and we also have a band lead and a middle school, high school chorus lead. All of them took it to their teams and said, what do students participate in that we would want to make sure that we put on this list? And then we took it to the CNI team as a review, and then it went to the cabinet. And so now it's coming to you. Want to go to the next slide? So these are the things that we have put on the initial activity list. You can see private art side, outside art lesson, and arts that can include anything like, I can take art. Participating in non-school arts-related performances, so I might be in the band, but I'm going to either go to the vocal performance that they're having for chorus, or I'm going to pass out programs at the theater performance. That is, I'm not getting a grade for that, it's not a part of my class, but I am participating and supporting the arts. Competitions, we have students that get selected to go perform in different venues and places for competitions. That is not a part of their grade, it is beyond what they do in the classroom. Participating and visiting art museums, attending concerts, artists, participating in sponsored art camps in the summer. We have quite a few students that might go to ECU or participate with the community college in their arts programs. And then we put on their other activities as are recommended by the arts leads for cabinet approval, because as it often happens, someone will come up with something that we will not have thought of, but that does fit the basic requirements of what we have. So that's the list that we have come up with for your approval. So the recommendation is that you approve the submitted list of accepted activities for the extracurricular portion of the arts proficiency endorsement as required by policy. You'll also see in the attachments there the documents that show the flow process, the entry of how they would document their things on the extracurriculars. We want to make sure that it, that they attest that they are doing these things, and that they have some kind of signature from a teacher or whoever's doing a lesson, or someplace, or a program, or a brochure, anything to show evidence that these are the things that I have done for my extracurriculars. Questions?
Any discussion? I'll start with, I'll start with Patty first.
So Scott's training me. First off, I think art's important, and you've given two excellent briefs. The question's simply, for the extracurricular activities, does Craven offer funding offsets?
We do not.
So that's totally on the parent?
Well, it's, what we do is we provide art activities that the students can participate in, that if it's not a part of their class, can count. When they do, there are things that some of the boosters will take. If they're selected for something that the school is participating in, the boosters have money to help offset those costs. So I'm thinking of like, for example, the art walk that happens downtown. There's no cost to go visit the Bank of the Arts and go see the displays. In fact, we have Valentine's cards there right now, should you like to go see them. But those particular opportunities, any type of opportunity can count, as long as I'm not getting a grade for it in an arts class. But there are people who do pay money for lessons. That also is something that can count. Or perhaps I might audition for one of the community plays downtown, and I'm participating in that, I'm not paying for that, but I'm spending many, many hours learning lines and going to rehearsals and practice. That should count for something.
Okay, thank you.
Do I understand it correctly that they have to also take four art classes?
Yes, they do have to have four art classes, and they have to maintain a 3.0 or better in the arts classes.
Excellent. I love it. I love that A-plus for the arts is what that is, the academics and the community engagement. This is good.
Great.
Lori?
I think this is wonderful. My son will be in high school next year. He started playing the trumpet in sixth grade. I never imagined that he would be a musician, but he has been teaching himself the guitar for the last two years, completely self-taught. And it's incredible to hear him play songs that I know, that I grew up listening to, like he plays Nirvana, and I'm like, that's crazy. But now we've started him in guitar lessons, and I'm really excited to see what he does when he gets to high school. So this is really, really incredible. So for everybody that thought I was just a sports mom, I'm not. I also really enjoy the arts. And my youngest is a drawer. He loves to draw and sing and dance, so I'm all over the place, but this is really incredible, and I support this all the way. So if nobody else has anything to say, I'm, oh, well, fine. But I still, I still make a motion that we approve.
Second. Yeah, I'll second the motion, but I also wanted to say, I think that we share our sentiment about this. I think that we spend, and we have spent a disproportionate amount of time on this board talking about athletics, and I think it's really equally important, if not maybe in some cases more important, because of the underappreciation on social media for the arts to talk about it and to recognize it. And I think it's a really important way that our students are able to stand out from the crowd when they're making application for jobs and, and college as well. And I think that, you know, they really don't have the budgets that we would like to be able to do things. And I think that's one of the areas where frankly, the superintendent has gone out of her way to help particularly our theater students. I know that's been the case at New Bern High School, when they wanted to do particular shows, and they've not had the funding, and, and the superintendent has, has come to their rescue. So we have put our money where our mouth is, to the extent that we have any extra funds available to do that. And so I, I second this. I think this is really important, and I want to thank you for your work on it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, if you're in favor, shoot your right hand. All in favor?
One more. This year, they have put in place arts requirement for graduations. Have an R between.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Mr. Monroe, you are up. Presentation is going to be on the reassignment process.
Good morning and Happy New Year to those who have not had an opportunity to speak to. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with you. In about three weeks, the floodgate is going to open with regard to reassignments. Wanted to share with you how this process works, especially for those who were not involved in last year's change, the way that we moved. We've made some revisions to Policy 4150, which is your policy regarding school assignments and reassignments. Subsection E covers the reassignment portions for families or those who are domiciled in Craven County, as well as those who are seeking to be reassigned to Craven County schools that are through Policy 4130, which is our discretionary admission. So those that live somewhere else but want to come to school here, this kind of encapsulates or covers what that process is. So starting this year, we changed the, we moved last year's changes, we moved the dates up because we wanted to be sure that we gave enough time for planning allotments, especially in our grades that have grade size restrictions, which is kindergarten through third grade. They need to know what those numbers are, and if we're going to give them more, it may impact those, the approval process have an impact on those class size allotments and other things. Move that date up. So the window for our general public, and those who were not aware, this year will be the entire month of February. February 1st through February 28th is the window which reassignments for current grades or school, students, those even coming to kindergarten, should submit their reassignment request from February 1st through February 28th. Window is open. The current links that are on our website for reassignment requests are for this current school year. Those are, now it's only open for those who are new to the district. They have five days from the day that they enroll to submit a request for reassignment. Or if it is a bona fide move, say I started at Creekside in August, we finished building our house, and now I moved, and, but I want to finish off the school year. So the current link is there for those. Those who are currently or missed the window last year, those are not being processed, unless there is some extenuating circumstance that the superintendent asked I review it, bring it to her, we make those currently. Those are the links that are out there for this current year are for only new and bona fide moves. So in every year, when the window opens, we have a reassignment application that is online. This past school year was the first year that we did everything electronic. We, thanks to Dr. Botwell, who built a very beautiful instrument for us, everything was done electronically. The reassignment request was made by the parent, you the bona fide email address, they got confirmation that it was sent, and then when there was a decision made, they received confirmation or that, that initial decision. So with the, when the window's open, the current reassignment request must be submitted. The guardian must have explained their reasons for their reassignment request. And the board has given directions with regard to how we are to look at those reassignment requests in regards to the reasons. The reasons that we're consider are there on the things that we have to consider. For those who are currently on reassignment, their behavior, these are our best standing clauses. Academics, the attendance, and this also includes early checkouts and early, and late arrival, and in the best interest of, of the children. The orderly and efficient administration of the public schools. We have schools that are over capacity with regard to the way that they, the number that they are, they were built to handle. And so the board was also looking to address that issue last year, and we've paid attention to that, and we'll continue to pay attention to that this year. And as well as the instruction, health and safety of the people who are enrolled. So these are the things that are considered when these reassignment requests come through. So after the reassignment request, it, the form is submitted, it's reviewed by myself, Director of Student Services. The input is also received from the schools. The administration has, and I, has opportunity to say, yeah, they were on reassignment, but they were tardy, or I had to suspend several times, or they're late oftentimes. Or this is a third-grade reassignment, and I'm, I'm already at three classes and, and I'm over 25 in, in each of my classrooms. So, and this is just for the number of students that belong in the district, so we have to consider that as well before we can approve that. So with administrator input, we consider those things, that those seven things there, as well as the administrative input. And the initial decision is made, and the parent is notified by April 1st. Because we moved everything electronically, that process, that window is, is minimized. So once we get them coming in, using the platform, we will actually be moving to a different platform this coming school year, as well as the appeal process will also help with the superintendent and the board panel appeals for those that, that may get to that, that point. So, and this, the initial decision is, is received by the parent. If the request was approved, the parent will receive the decision, and then our team will make the, the transfer for that school year. Well, because of infinite campus and what we used to call E O Y, pretty much the data managers will have to go in individually and tell the system that their next school year, who, assigned school will be this school or the school that they are assigned to. So once they, that is done, when everything rolls over, they'll remain there. If they are not, the system automatically defaults them back to the school that their address is domiciled to this district. So that's, those are some things that have to happen on our end. However, if the request is not approved, parents will also receive notice of the decision. And then they have five days of, from five business days according to the policy, to make a appeal, a written appeal to the superintendent to reconsider that. So if no, then we go to the first appeal. There is one caveat with regard to this. We do note that admission to our magnet schools or school choice, Craven County is not open enrollment, and we, I have four schools of choice, which is J T Barber, Roger Bell, Oaks Road, and West Craven Middle. Because they are restart schools, they have more flexibility, so there are some things that we can consider differently for those four schools, especially with our elementary. Try not to go over capacity in our restricted grades A3, but if there are other things that we can consider for those schools, we, we look at them a little bit differently regarding their request for approval. So now, we get to the point where we got a denial first appeal. So if we move to the next slide. Okay, the first appeal, the parents may appeal the decision to the superintendent within five business days, and I'm using the language right out of Policy 4150. That written request, appeal is submitted to the superintendent. It does not have to be mailed by U S mail, if we receive them by email, sometimes they'll send it to me, and I'll forward to her, and we accept it as the written, because it's time, date stamped. Parent is the parental guardian of this individual. We've had some instances where relatives have tried to appeal for family members, but that is, that's not accepted. Not only accepted, they're written from the guardian, parent, legal guardian or custodial guardian for child. The superintendent reviews the appeal. We sit down, I go over, I bring the applications to the superintendent, look at the quest, the appeal, he makes a decision to either overturn the initial decision or to keep the initial decision. overturn the initial decision or to keep the initial decision. So if she, uh, the appeal is, um, approved, the parent will receive notice and go to a second appeal. If she overturns it, the parent will be notified, it's transferred. Questions about the initial decision or second or first?
On the five days, how are the parents or the guardians notified of that?
Electronically. And we did that last year, and, um, so, and both systems that we're, the system we're going to move to will send a confirmation that is received. So if a parent doesn't receive confirmation that they submitted one, and they say, I submitted it, you may need to go back and check your email address, because it sent it back to whatever email address. And so that same email address will receive that initial decision. Building out, we will build this process well. Fender. Digitize any of our documents. Like our age, typically like electronic, and we had out possibly fifteen minutes. With process, we're also moving into a, a digital system, uh, age where people went to the mailbox. Okay, so if there is superintendent decides to uphold the initial denial, then there is a second. Next slide. So the second appeal is the final appeal. This appeal, uh, is to appeal the superintendent. Once the parents are notified of the not reassigned, the parent or guardian must submit to Board of Education within five days of write, of in writing of receiving the notice of this. So five business days on the first appeal, this, the policy says five days within receiving the notice. So typically, I won't process any, or we try not to process any over the weekend, over holidays, so that parents, because they're receiving them electronically, we now have a time, date stamp when it was sent and should have been received via the, the email. So the written request, we, again, we accept writing, prefer emails, but get them in, and it must be by the legal guardian, parent of that child who is requesting the appeal. So, uh, within receiving that notice, the written request is submitted to the superintendent, who then forwards it to the board chair, and the board chair will then, um, decide on a hearing panel of board members. Once that panel is decided and seated, this meeting will be scheduled oftentimes with, through our board attorney, who does that communication and facilitates those meetings. Uh, the board, uh, will hear, and these are the appeals, the parent, a witness and the student available come to the board, uh, and share their appeal in person with the board panel. Board panel then makes a decision or makes a recommendation that will then come to the full board for a final decision. This, uh, board has, uh, the same amount of time to render their decision, but of course, it depends on when the hearing was and when the full board meets, when that, uh, decision is communicated to the, a parent. Board will render decision and notify the parent of decision sent to the parent application. And this is the only requirement in the policy that says that decision will be sent to the parent by application, by mail, telephones, telefax, email, or any other message necessary reasonably designed to. So this is the only requirement that we have when it comes to how parents are notified. And this is the final appeal, and then, um, that is taken care of, um, from the your office or the superintendent's office, uh, via those things. This is the final request. If the board approves the, uh, reassignment, then they, again, uh, the process stops, and the child is reassigned through infinite campus. If they, the board opposed the denial of the approval, denial of the approval, the board decision is final. There is no other appeals happening.
Any other questions? Oh, Pat.
Sorry, lots of questions, and I don't need this answer today. How many, um, reassignments have been approved in the county? As I said, I don't need the answer today.
I, I want to tell you, uh, I could say it's over, over five hundred. But you said approvals, um, very few. I, I would have to go back and look, um, at school by school, and it's not disseminated. By that number, I have a complete spreadsheet. Um, I, actually, there is a spreadsheet that I can look into our current document, have who are on, who's approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, since we're, we're live, that five hundred received requests, not that many approved, and I will be happy to send that to the board by school.
Yeah, yes. We've seen a lot of appealing. Ms. Stacy?
Um, for the benefit of the board, I believe the number of hearing appeals that we heard was probably in excess of thirty, upwards of thirty, right? Ms. Neldar, sixty? Okay, see, it all sort of blends together. Mr. Bateau and I spent a lot of time together in hearing appeals, and, um, we spent a lot of time trying to be sure that we were consistent and that, uh, there was equal protection for our students and our citizens of this county, so that the rules apply equally to everybody.
And to be consistent with that, you know, I processed the five hundred and that on the.
And we appreciate it. Any other questions?
Excellent briefing, thank you.
All right, I'm going to give everybody a ten minute break, and then we will come back.
All right, we are back and Ms. Michelle Lee is up with academic calendar, something that everybody likes to talk about.
I'm gonna let Dr. about, Will.
Okay.
I'll be available.
Good morning. Thank you so much for letting me speak about school calendars. We are not fine.
I did what everybody else did. There you go. So, good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of calendar. I just want to make sure I stress that this is a multi-individual development and so I will attempt to answer any questions, but there may be a moment where some others in the room may come join and help with that. And so, I am going to, before we go into the presentation, I just want to talk about the attachments that you're going to see here today. We have attached eight total documents, four calendars. So, we have been talking about the possible adoption of a multi-year calendar, which I will discuss in the presentation in just a moment, but I did want to share that you should see a most recent draft based on the feedback that we've received, which looks like what you would see on the website, but then another one that's exactly the same with very intricate details beside it to show you how many hours we're talking about, how many days in each semester, and it'll give you much more detail. And so, that's there. And then, what was recently added is a present, a very brief presentation. We had a survey that went out to stakeholders specifically looking to get updated feedback from not just our staff, but our families. That survey, thank you, Ms. Wagner, closed yesterday, and so, we analyzed that data yesterday to make sure that we were giving you the most recent data. So, if you do not mind, if you would go into that presentation and we will walk through the updates that have occurred thus far. So, again, we are talking about the possibility, and again, no decisions obviously have been made regarding the updates that have happened, but we are talking about the possibility of a multi-year adoption, so a 25-26 calendar for both our early college and traditional schools, but also the adoption of a 26-27 calendar. And so, if you will follow to the next slide, I'm gonna kind of give you the timeline of events that have occurred thus far for this current adoption. We started having conversations about this, these proposed calendars on October 3rd. On October 23rd, we had an initial district calendar meeting held, so members of cabinet were in attendance, myself, those who have traditionally kind of gotten the ball rolling on calendar, got together and started talking about it. The very next day, at the end-of-month principals' meeting, we shared shells. We put in the holidays. We know those things don't move. The things that have to be there, we put in and we started talking to the principals about basic drafts and getting the conversation started. It was during that particular meeting that principals selected not just themselves, but also members of their staff to serve as representatives. These would be the people that would look at this information and then go back and share that with their staff members. On October 29th, we sent a welcoming email to any of those representatives, letting them know that their principal had selected them and really valued their input to be a part of that charge. On October 30th, the next day, I had one staff calendar feedback meeting after school where anyone and everyone could come on to a virtual call and any questions they may have about school calendar development, what they were seeing, we would talk through that. That allowed them to feel more confident in going back to their staff and talking about some of the questions they receive. We had four more sessions the very next day on Halloween, and then we came to the next boardwork session on November 12th, and we shared some of the staff stakeholder feedback that we had received. At that time, we had not distributed to families and community members. We had some minor updates that were shared on November 12th, and then we went back from that and went to November 21st, which was the next end-of-month principals' meeting, and we shared some of the updates that have occurred during this process. On November, on that day, November 21st, both early college principals recognized how unique their calendar is and asked, "Could we sit down specifically and talk about early colleges?" And so, we had that meeting on November 26th, where we honed in on what our early colleges need to do because they have to align very closely with our community college. December 17th, Ms. Lee came back and talked about, to the boardwork session, about the drafts, and then there was a survey that went out, then it became time to get feedback from our staff members again, but also other stakeholders. And so, on December 20th, during the staff in the know, a survey went out which showed the most recent drafts and then asked a series of questions. That exact same survey went out three days again later on December 23rd in the families in the know, and it also was posted on various social media platforms, specifically asking families and community members and staff to look at those posted on the survey, review them, let us know what you're thinking. And that leads us to yesterday, which was January 13th, and that's when the survey closed and we began to review comprehensively that feedback. And so, today, we are going to come and share that additional stakeholder feedback. We have made some adjustments based on that feedback that I'm gonna kind of walk through with all of you and then share some updated drafts, and those are the ones that are attached in simply. So, if we would go to the next slide, I want to share with you, so we are talking about, this is the survey that closed yesterday. We do have feedback that went out to staff. That is not the data that you're seeing here today. This is specifically the data that went out via families in the know, staff in the know, and went on social media platforms. We had 166 total responses. Parents and guardians represented about 53% of the responses. Craven County staff members, we had 72 responses from them, which represented 43. We only had four community members offer feedback, and so, that's 2%, and then two students did offer feedback at 1%. Now, there was a series of questions, and even though we had 166 total responses, not everybody offered feedback on a specific calendar. So, it might be, "I'm a parent of an early college child. I'm not gonna offer feedback on these. I'm only gonna hone in on early college." There are reasons, could be many, but I do want to stress that the feedback you're gonna see on traditional and early colleges doesn't necessarily represent 166 people. And so, I did give you that breakdown as well. So, we had 91 people give feedback on our 25-26 traditional calendar draft, 29 on 25-26 early college draft. We had just a little bit lower on 26-27. We had 70 people respond for that at 42%, and then 19 individuals provided feedback on the 26-27 proposed early college calendar. Now, what we, what was good and very beneficial is all 166 respondents responded to the question on, "Would a multi-year calendar adoption be beneficial?" And so, we had 80%, so 133 of the 166 respondents replied, "Yes, a multi-year adoption would be very beneficial." And so, that represented not just Craven County staff, that also included parents, guardians, community members, and then, of course, two students. All right, so, I have sort of broken up this feedback into a series of themes that emerged from that feedback, and so, we're gonna go to that next slide if you don't mind. Perfect. So, the one that we received the most feedback about would be winter break. And so, I have divided this into parent feedback and staff feedback, as those are the two stakeholder groups that supplied the most comments there. So, I do, though, want to back up a little bit and talk about the calendar that we are currently in, and that would be the 24-25 calendar. We did have an extended winter break with, and it's not necessarily extended winter break, we had a series of workdays during week three. So, students would not have been in session, but staff had the opportunity to come back during that week three and get started. Now, I want to stress that this was the first year that we started the 20 additional days or 20 instructional minutes added to the calendar, and due to that, that caused staff to come back sooner for this school year. So, they came back earlier in August than they traditionally have, and one of the things that we gave them and adopted in that 24-25 calendar was a little bit longer of a break in December to accommodate that they came back sooner and had a shortened summer vacation. So, I did want to just kind of talk about what led, as a reminder, to that longer three weeks for this calendar. So, here's this, after they reviewed our most recent drafts, which you have before you, these are the comments that families presented. So, some, it was literally almost a 50-50 split. Some prefer longer breaks to allow for family time and rest. Others favored a shorter break due to childcare challenges. Several parents appreciated the balance provided by our new proposed calendars before you today. So, they appreciated that it wasn't three weeks, but they also appreciated that it wasn't a traditional two and landed right in two and a half. So, see, these are some of the direct quotes. I provided six for you because it, the first two are together, the second grouping is together, and the third group's together. So, the first two are from parents saying, "Christmas break seems really short. The 24-25 calendar has been the best I've seen. Don't take away the extended Christmas break. Our kids need that break." So, the, these two would be asking for us to consider that full three weeks. The next two that I kind of pulled out of this data, "Kids should be able to go back to school on January 5th," which you see very traditionally across the state. Another comment that related, "I think two weeks off at Christmas is plenty of time and they should return on January 5th." So, you can see the contradiction there from the first two. And then, the last two, I like the drafts that gave you, that we presented to you, and it says, "Winter, I've noticed winter break is shorter," which I like because not everyone has adequate childcare for three weeks. So, they're okay with the 2.5 weeks and appreciate that we did not return to three weeks. And then, I like that it doesn't have an extremely, extremely long Christmas break. This is definitely a good option. So, that was parents and families. The feedback we received from staff, which was again about 43% of our respondents, said, "There is not enough before/after Christmas holiday. It would be nice to have a couple of extra workdays after Christmas break to prepare for the new semester. If we need more O-days, they should be placed after the New Year's holiday like they do for the 24-25 calendar. There should be more workdays after Christmas break, not only two days for teacher, not enough to do, for two days after teachers to prepare. Having the full week of workdays upon return from winter break was very helpful, and I do not feel there are enough workdays after winter break for teachers to fully prepare for being back." We did not have any direct quotes from staff suggesting that we should return to two weeks of winter vacation. So, I want to note, one part of this that's really important is if you see the two and a half weeks that's there, the last bit of that two and a half weeks is workdays, either required or optional. We choose in this district for the semester to change over in December. And so, our students take their final exams in the fall, they go to winter break, and then they come back and they start new classes, specifically our high schools. If you look at our neighboring counties and you see that they're only taking two weeks, many of them are not testing their kids until after winter break, and if you look at their approved calendar, they may not have two, longer than two weeks at Christmas, but literally two weeks later, they're taking three, three days off of teacher workdays to prepare for the semester changeover. So, while we would take what we're looking at as two and a half weeks altogether, many of our districts are still taking that time, it's just that they do their semester changeover in January and not in December. Okay? So, that was regarding winter break. The next slide is gonna show you how we updated the calendar to reflect the comments. So, the first group or picture that you're seeing there is gonna be our current calendar, which is 24-25. And I should stress, we are talking about traditional schools at this point. Our early colleges follow something slightly altered. So, you can see here that students had an early release day on December 20th and they came back on the 13th. Our staff was able to come back on January 6th. They were required to come back on January 9th. So, based on the feedback where families said, "Three weeks is too long," based on the feedback where staff said, "I absolutely need this time," we took that and changed it to two and a half weeks. So, on 25-26, students would get out on December 19th, and then there would be three optional workdays on the, or excuse me, two optional workdays and one required workday in January of 2026. The same thing kind of duplicates itself on a 26-27 calendar. Students would be out for approximately two and a half weeks. Staff would have the opportunity return, to return on January 4th. I want to hone in for just a second on the no days that are showing on the screen. A no day is exactly what it sounds like. It is a no day for staff, it is a no day for students, it does not count in the 215-day requirement, nobody is paid for a no day. And so, we could change those no days, but the only thing you can change them to is either an optional or required workday or an instructional day. So, if we do that and we change those no days to optional workdays, that will work for some, but there are a significant amount of staff members in our district who are either beginning or do not have the time, and they would not receive a full two-week winter break because they would have to come into work. And so, one of the things that Craven has done historically for quite some time is they have embedded no days in there that at a minimum allows all of our staff the opportunity to be with their families for at least two weeks. So, that's why those no days are there. Okay? I'm gonna flip over, and of course, when we kind of get to the end, we can toggle back to any of these slides, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The next theme that emerged was early release days. The first group you're looking at is early colleges. So, for those, for the good of the public who do not know, our early, our early colleges operate on an early release day every Friday. They do a lot of stuff with their students, mentoring and various things, and so, students release half-days on Fridays, and as a result, both principals indicated, "We do not need early release days. We have them, they are not needed." And so, the only, we removed all of those from the calendars, and the only release days you're gonna see for our early colleges are gonna be on the last day prior to winter break, similar to our traditional schools, and then on the last day of school. Those appear in purple. Early release days on our traditional calendars will also appear in pink. Pink means students. If you see it in purple, that means students and staff. So, once we know our students are safe and they're home and they're with their families, staff have the opportunity to leave when it's purple. As a result, we're gonna show you on the next slide the changes that were made. So, on the left-hand side, we're looking at our proposed traditional calendars. The other thing that came about from the feedback was traditional schools, many stakeholders shared, "I appreciate an early release day. I like that it appears near the end of a grading period, but it is very difficult to get the kids kind of back in the groove if that early release day appears in the middle of a week." Staff, or excuse me, parents and families also provided feedback saying, "An early release day is kind of difficult for me on a Wednesday. I'd much prefer to see that either, or at the end of the week." And as a result, that first collection of images is showing you the change that was made. So, early releases have been moved from either like a Wednesday or a Thursday, and they will now appear on Fridays, and they appear near a grading period end. Not always, sometimes they will appear perhaps near a holiday, or they might appear around the time when professional development needs to be offered, but they have been moved, excuse me, you should see three on the calendar for our traditionals, and you can see those early release days embedded there on Fridays. They also keep that purple, which would be those early release days for students and staff. Okay? All right. The next collection of feedback we had was for surrounding the month of October. If you look at the image on the left-hand side for proposed traditional calendars, these colors were actually almost like inverted. So, we had an early release day at the beginning of October, the beginning of the week, and then we had an optional workday around when report cards were going out, but many stakeholders said, "I would really appreciate an optional workday surrounding Columbus Day." And so, we made that switch, and you will see that on both the 25-26 calendar and the 26-27 calendar for our traditional schools. The optional workday appears on that Monday of Columbus Day, and then the early release is gonna appear about a week later on Friday. And if you'll notice, right above- And if you'll notice right above that early release, that's when the quarter ends. And then it's right before when report cards get issued. And so that early release allows our teachers some time to finalize grades and get them printed and ready. We actually have report cards going home today. And so I know they need this time to really get that done. Now, early colleges do not need this because they actually do fall break. And so if you'll look at their proposed early college calendars, they have fall break starting on Columbus Day. And so they do not, they don't want early release days, right? And then they don't need an optional workday there because they'll be beginning their Columbus Day. And so that's why you do not see it on early college calendars. Okay. Our next slide is going to talk about the feedback surrounding spring break and Easter break. Now Easter this year is for 2425 is very late. I know you've kind of looked at that as a very late Easter. It always fluctuates. And as a result of that, we have sort of a mini break this year. And then also Easter break for the 2526 calendar, or excuse me, 2425 calendar. Many of our staff have expressed they love this. And we also had some families who said, I really love sort of a mini break wherever Easter isn't because it allows us an opportunity to kind of take a break with our kids and not necessarily be on the peak season to go visit somewhere and be, and go to vacation somewhere. And so we embedded that where we were able for spring break and Easter break. So if you look at the first collection of calendars, that's going to be the proposed traditional calendars. We have a little opportunity at the top of March. Notice it's happening right near the end of a grading period. So teachers can choose to work those two optional workdays or they can take that time. And then Easter appears at the end of March on into the beginning of April. This would be matching what is happening for our early colleges so that those spring breaks match. And to the best of our knowledge, that is when spring break would occur for Craven Community College. So we would align with that as well. That appears again on 27, the 27 calendar. So you can kind of see those and you can see that we have this little mini opportunity at the beginning of March. And then down below where Easter falls, starting with Good Friday on March 26. We don't necessarily see it for our proposed 2526 calendar, but we did embed an optional workday at the end of the 2627 calendar because that is a very long stretch. That appears sooner. And so that's a pretty long stretch before we get into the end of May. And so we embedded something sort of right around where progress reports are coming out to help our staff in that way. Early colleges do not need that little mini break at the beginning of March because again, they have fall break in the fall semester and they also have their Fridays. And so prince, the two principals indicated, we don't need that. We, our schedule looks a little bit different, but we did embed them a workday near the end of a grading period to allow their instructors to get grading done prior to the start of a new quarter. All right. And then I want to spend a little bit of time on our next slide about the concept of beginning to end. We had an incredible amount of feedback from all stakeholder groups about the amount of workdays at the beginning of the year. And specifically the comment that came up repeatedly was, take some of those workdays that you're seeing on the screen and distribute them throughout the school year and don't have so many the beginning of the year. And so what I hope that I can kind of explain here is that teachers are required to work 215 days. That it can't be 214, it can't be 216. It has to equal exactly 215 days from the very first day to the very last day, including everything. Instructional days, required workdays, optional workdays, holidays, annual leave days. It all has to from start to finish equal 215. So from, if we look at that, at the calendar we're currently following, which is the 2425 traditional calendar, August 5th to January 3rd, when we count all of that together is exactly 215 days. Excuse me, June, wow, thank you. If we were to have taken off August 5th and started on August 6th, then that means we would have had to end on June 4th. You can either add to the top or add to the bottom, but adding in between wouldn't have changed anything. And we can take away these optional days and required workdays throughout the year, but they still have to work 215 days. So if we don't have an optional workday or required workday, then that becomes an instructional day. And so what we did do however, and actually I want to really fast if, if it's okay. I want to toggle back to slide five for just a second. And I want to talk again about those no days. Now, the only way to change that start to finish is we could take away some of these no days. If we do, they have to either become an instructional day or they're going to have to become a workday. And we can do that, but when we do that, the people who have, are new to the profession, fresh on the job, are not going to have that time and they will have to get out as late as the 23rd of December and come back as soon as January 2nd because they don't have the time to have a full two week break with their family. So now if we go back to slide 10. What we did do, listening to the feedback, is we removed one of those days. So now the optional workdays would start on a Tuesday. And we did hear in addition to all of that feedback, we heard a lot of feedback from our school leaders and many of our staff members that this was the first time that they did not feel rushed and strained to start school. For anybody in the public who has ever been a part of opening school, it is very, very intense. There is a lot of work that needs to get done. On top of that, we need to have open houses, we need to have convocation. There are just a lot of things happening and all the principals need to have opening meetings. We need to have departments, have their meetings together. It's very intense. In addition, we have beginning teachers and new staff members who need to go through orientation. So there's a lot of things that are happening and many of our stakeholders within the schools reported this year. This is the first time where I was able to catch my breath and then I have been able to in the past. And so we took one day off and you will see the optional and required workdays in August. And then you can see when they would end in June. And we remember, remember from last year, learned that we have to touch for our traditional schools. We have to touch the month of June. And so we could work this in such a way that, that students and staff would be out in May, but that would not work with regard to retirement. And so we do have to touch the month of June. Notice those days are optional and so it would be up to the staff member if they wish to take that time and end a little bit sooner. And finally, I want to talk a little bit about graduation. This is the one that I want to stress is to be determined. So let's just make sure we stress that for the good of the public. This is to be determined. So if we look, let's start on the left-hand side of the screen and talk about our early college calendars. We would try to align as closely with the community college graduation because many family members fly in, drive in, do whatever they need to do to come see both of those celebrations. And so that has changed over the years. I've had a good opportunity to sit down with Dr. Artis and Ms. Thompson and talk about what that has looked like in the past. It used to be that Craven Community College's graduation was on Saturday. Well, now their graduation falls on a Friday. And so that causes some discussion on when do we have the celebration for the early college piece? And so we know, we have confirmed that May 15th of 2026 is Craven Community College's graduation. We do not yet have the date for 2027. And so it may be that the early colleges have their graduation on the 13th or the 14th, a couple of days prior because we want to allow our families to be able to come in. We can anticipate based on this year and next year, that graduation will probably fall on May 14th of 2027. And as such, we might see graduation on the 12th or the 13th. However, that is to be determined. There are a lot of many moving pieces to that. And so Ms. Lee, Dr. Miller, Dr. Sellers, all engaged with the principals and said, we would like for you to get stakeholder feedback on that. Please talk with your staff, consider many things and come back with us and let's talk about what is best for families, staff. And so right now we can kind of project where graduation might be, but we would first like to afford them the opportunity to gain feedback. Likewise, on the right-hand side, we have our proposed traditional calendars. This one's a little more intricate because where they decide to graduate, or where we all decide to put graduation impacts directly what workdays and what the last day of school would be. This school year, for a point of reference, the last day of school is on a Thursday. Graduation occurs the very next day. And that is what we have historically done. That is a very, very, very fast turnaround. It's exceptionally quick. Many of our high school counselors, our high school administrators will tell you that is intense. And not just that, they're having graduation rehearsals in the middle of testing. There are a lot of things happening, but it's done statewide and across the nation. So we reached out to the principals and said, we'd like you to consider two options. And if you say both of those are, you know, horrific and there's another option we haven't considered, please let us know. So the first option would be option A. The last day of school would be on a Friday. You can see that purple block there. That would be the last day of school for students and staff. But graduation would occur one week later on Friday, May 29th. So they would still graduate prior to June. And that would give our staff a full week to do the grading that they need to do, to do graduation practice. There's just a lot of things that can occur in that week. Okay, so that would be option A. Option B would be to do what we have traditionally done. Our last day of school would move to the 21st and then we would have graduation the very next day on that Friday. And so you can kind of see what that looks like. Again, there are a lot of many moving parts to that. This impacts multiple families, not just our high school. And so we have asked our traditional high school principals to seek feedback from their staff. But I believe Dr. Sellers and Mr. Griffin also engaged with all air, all grade level principals to say like, how do you feel about this? What, what does this impact? So to be determined. And then finally, excuse me. This is on the, the next slide, thank you. This is on the PDFs that I provided to you, but I just wanted to show you the alignment of the four drafts that you have received today. All of them meet the 1,025 instructional hour requirement. And then it shows you the breakdown of how many instructional hours are in semester one versus instructional hours in semester two and how that equates into instructional days. We do that just so you can see the amount of days, but again, we are hours based. Keep in mind that for both of our early college calendars, we are calculating at half days. So that's why their hours will look different than our traditional schools. And then at that first section, I'll tell you, it tells you about how many additional days we have, should we have inclement weather or any need to close a school for some sort of emergency. Normally, we're going to ask for about 10 to 15 additional days of wiggle room. And so we are right where we need to be here. That if something happens, we would not be having to take away any sort of break or required, or excuse me, workdays and turn them instructional. We have the wiggle room there. I also want to break down grading periods because we wouldn't want quarter one to be 30 days and quarter two to be 45. That of course messes up with pacing and alignment. And so I broke down the distribution of grading periods and you can see that quarter one, quarter two, quarter three and quarter four do show alignment. We are going to see a slightly inflated semester two. And the, that is because of calendar law, we cannot begin prior to the Monday before the 26th of August. And so even if we removed all of the workdays in the fall semester, by meeting calendar law and starting when we have to start, we would never equal the spring semester. In fact, if we were to end later than where we are right now, it would be even more of a discrepancy. So I just want to show why there is a discrepancy between semester one and semester two. And then finally, all of these have 215 staff days. All of them have 11 holidays and 10 annual leave days. Remember that this calendar, 2425, has 11 annual leave days, which essentially kind of doesn't allow any of our staff members to accrue an additional day. That worked for this year's calendar, but we brought that back down to 10 so that even our brand new teacher has the opportunity to be earning. We have at least, at least nine workdays on the calendar, so we meet that requirement. And then all of these will finish students prior to Memorial Day, which allows us to start remediation as soon as possible and the opportunity to retest. And then gives all of our other departments, facilities, maintenance, the opportunity to use as much time as possible to essentially start school again and make it look amazing and get ready for the new school year. So that was a lot. I went through a lot of information there and this is a really good time to go back to any slides. I'm happy to attempt to ask or answer any question you have.
Any question?
Thank you. You do such good work. We love you. Couple things. So I noticed in the traditional calendar for April of 27, there's an optional workday on a Wednesday, April 14th. It's just, that's like the only one that I've noticed. And then the early college has March of 26th on a Tuesday, an optional workday. And then March of 27 has a required workday on a Tuesday as well. And those are the only ones, the whole school years, that are not Fridays or Mondays. They're just plopped in in the middle of the week.
Yes, so we would not historically, so some of our elementary schools are on a wheel. And so if we were to have all of our workdays on a Monday, then the same sweet group of babies would never be able to have music or art or PE because they would always miss that day. And so while many of the workdays are going to appear on a Monday or Friday, because that does tend to be like the preference, we do want to make sure that some workdays are distributed throughout the calendar.
I want to add to that too. It is nice to have them on Mondays and Fridays because then people can make them a long weekend. But, and, and that's very nice for teachers. But we do have some professional development and professional learning that teachers are more likely to come on Wednesday than to take that day. And so in trying to make sure there's a little bit of opportunity for some professional learning during the school year that's optional, but we want to make sure we give them opportunities because they are trying to accrue CEU so they can keep their license valid. So that's another reason.
And then I'm always asking about graduation.
Yes.
I don't know how I feel about waiting a week. I see the point of, you know, doing the practice in between the last day of school and graduation. But I always ask about a Saturday graduation. I've been doing that for two years. And staggering so that we can go to more than one. Have we asked our principals about that?
I will turn this over to Ms. Lee.
I, I just want to remind you that it takes a lot of staff to pull off graduation. And if we do it on a required workday, they, our staff is all at work and we can use them into capacity to help put graduation on. We want to put on a nice event for our families. If we have it on an optional workday or a Saturday, we are not guaranteed that we'll have the staffing to have the type graduation that we want. So principals are very reluctant to have it on a Saturday or on a require, optional workday because they need their people there to help them put on graduation. So I would say our principals absolutely would not be in favor of that. They have, they have stressed that. And as far as the staggered graduation, we have, we've had lots of conversations about that. The problem always is, no one wants to be the graduation that's held at one o'clock in the afternoon on a football field with 95 or 100 degree weather. Everybody wants it at 8:30 in the morning when it is the coolest part of the day. If we were having it like at Mingy's in Greenville, like they do and they rotate them. You have an air-conditioned venue, but we just don't have that. And so we would have to rotate it. And we don't want people falling out with heat stroke during graduation, if at all possible.
Well, if we're going to wait a week in between the last day of school and graduation, we could maybe move a required workday to a Thursday and a Friday, different days.
Yeah, we, that, I mean, we, we'd really have three graduations. So we could, I mean.
I just don't, personally, I don't know how everybody else feels. I don't like being confined to just going to one school. I would love to be able to support all of them.
Yes, ma'am. And that's, and in the past.
And maybe that's selfish, I don't know.
In the past, our, we've kind of made sure that, well, what we've asked is the board member that represents that community go. But then this past year, just for those of you that don't know, Ms. Kitzinger wanted to be in Havelock representing her, her group, but she had a child graduating from New Bern High School. So it does become difficult and I understand that.
That's all.
Thank you.
I'm always going to bring that up.
Yes, ma'am. We were expecting that question.
That's all I really had to say. Other than that, you weren't. Okay, well, other than that, I think it looks great.
Stacy.
So I just want to thank you all for all of your work on this. I feel like we have come so far with the calendar in a short period of time. And so I want to thank everybody involved in this and point out that this is an area where I think we're constantly being accused of not taking stakeholder input. And we have consistently done that with great fidelity, particularly with respect to this issue. And there are so many moving parts. And there are so many moving parts when it comes to looking at calendar. I don't think the public really truly and truly appreciates all the requirements that we have uh, to keep in mind because we've not even mentioned uh, the elephant in the room, which is the state calendar law, so that by statute, we have dates before which we cannot start and cannot end. Uh, and so uh, I think that this presentation is super useful because it gives our families and our staff predictability for a, you know, a pretty long period of time as to what their lives will look like. Allows for a lot of planning, uh, all the professional development we have to have. And we are not uh, at risk of um, getting ourselves in a situation where we're going to be sued uh, for violating the calendar law and wasting taxpayer dollars uh, on, on something that is a losing proposition. Uh, meanwhile, I think we need to continue to advocate for change in the calendar law, obviously, because I think uh, given the competitive environment we're in, uh, and we don't have the flexibility that our competitors do, I think that is a completely uneven playing field, continues to be. Uh, so I want to thank you all for making sure we've got the right number of days and that our semesters are really, I mean, by all these measures, by hours and days, as equal as they possibly can be. And I think it is a hugely important deal that our semesters are balanced and that our students have an opportunity to take their exams before Christmas break. Uh, the thought of going back to a situation where kids are literally live engaging in learning loss over the holidays, uh, i- is a horrible prospect. And so I'm really happy, um, and I want to thank you all.
And Ms. Stacy, I just want to mention, we agree a hundred percent. It, we would love to adopt the Community College Calendar and have ninety days before um, Christmas break and ninety days after. That would be all of our ideal. I, I am, I, I say it every year, I'm hopeful. I saw under the dome, it was mentioned in their newsletter this month. So I'm hoping that they will um, continue to discuss it at the legislation, but um, that is the one thing everybody can help us with. Let your legislators know we need calendar control.
Yep. Ms. Davis.
Um, great presentation. Thank you, by the way. My question is, if we waited a week for graduation, when would practice for graduation be? Because my concern is if we do it when kids are out of school, are they going to even come to practice?
Correct. And, and that was part of our concern with the principals. Um, you have them, um, when we do it on that Friday, you have them trapped. They're at school and we can't do practice. So they, they would be required to have to come in and do practice. Um, the principals seem to think that these are seniors and they want to graduate. This is the one thing that they'll be glad to come do because um, if you don't practice, you don't walk. So um, but, but that could be a consideration, absolutely.
So then what would be the issue with transportation for kids who do not have rides to school? E- even though they're seniors, some kids don't drive.
Yes ma'am. I, I absolutely understand. I think that is the, that is the um, liability of doing it that way. Um, so, we wouldn't provide transportation. They would have to, they would have to figure out their transportation um, themselves. I, I personally was not at the meeting. I've been out six. I wasn't at the meeting when they decided to send this back to the principals. I would never have agreed to that because we don't, we don't really generally let them choose when the graduation date is because we see the big picture. We have transportation issues. Um, if we get them on campus and they don't have a way home, how are we going to get them home? There's lots of moving parts to that. Um, my recommendation would be to do it on that Friday and um, and move the calendar. Um, adjust it that one, for that one way. But Dr. Miller is the boss and I wasn't here either.
Which brings up the point I, I want to make really clear. Um, and Dr. Artis is in the room and he can tell you, we got feedback both as a group, but individually, they provided me feedback. And it's important to me as a superintendent, when folks share concerns and feedback, that they see, not that they're always going to get their way, but that they see their voice matters. And then he's one that we requested some changes and we made that based on the early college. In addition, um, when, anytime we send out a survey, you're going to have people say they never listen anyway. There were changes made to this calendar specific to the feedback we were given by parents and teachers and community. So um, with two cabinet members sick, they're right, we, the, the ones that were here, I'm like, if in doubt, we're always going to ask for feedback for the people closest to the work. And the principals know what works and what doesn't work at their school. So while I could say it's going to be this day and there's benefits to that, I want them to be able to support because of their decision, they'll support it. So as often as we can, I want to ask the people closest to the work. But then I'm going to hold them accountable for making sure things that kids can get to school and that behaviors are where they need to be when kids are already out and come back and all of those other things we consider. But again, we're going to continue to have conversations at the end of month with our principals so that we can really, um, it was a quick turnaround and I don't like asking for feedback and not giving them a lot of think time. So we've told them at our next end of month, we will talk about it again and they've had time to, like they always do, pick up the phone after we ask them and call one another and um, give us that feedback. So that's something that we can always change, graduation date. I would say we want to do that as early as possible for families that travel, which is one of the benefits of having it around Memorial Day because then you've got that long weekend. Um, but also trying to understand the perspective of staff that are trying to get those grades in and make sure all that's done. So we will continue to have that conversation. But I did want to point out direct feedback from principals, both in the survey and to us individually, as well as parent and community members. And that feedback was taken and, and days were changed on the calendar based on the feedback.
Um, I also want to thank you for the presentation, not just today, but always, Dr. Bowel, you and your team, the way you present this information in a way that people, the public, the board, and people can digest it. And so I do appreciate that. Um, the only feedback I've had from constituents has been the three weeks at Christmas. I understand you have all the restrictions around that. Um, I did look at the six sister school districts like I always do and um, all of them have two weeks at Christmas and only Onslow and Pitt have their exams after Christmas. The rest of them have them before. Um, but um, they took extended, the ones that have January exams, they took extended, extended, it seemed like MLK holidays. But I, I still prefer, as a parent, I would prefer before Christmas and two weeks. But um, and I, I understand the restrictions and I know that the kids or the students at the early college are a small fraction of the graduating seniors. Um, but I do want to make mention that the premise of the early college was to introduce kids from families who they would be the first generation college graduates. And so um, at, you know, to any extent that we could couple our graduation date with the early college weekend would, I think would be so appreciated. But I, I understand the restrictions and that they're a small number of the graduating seniors.
Oh, we have the parent.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for um, the way that you explained all of that. Um, not only do I have a child at Farm Life um, in Vanceboro, I also um, am employed there as well and I'm from the community there. Um, and so you know, you hear things in the community from other parents. Um, and the way that you explained the ins and outs of the calendar, I don't know if it's possible for you guys to short, or you know, edit that clip where you explain that and really have just that section out there for the community and the parents because, you know, and I've only been employed there for a little over a year. And I'm back in school uh, so that I can teach full-time. And so there's a lot of things that you don't realize, like as a parent and even maybe as a staff member, um, as far as the calendar is concerned. And a lot of the feedback that you presented here is feedback that I have heard. Um, so it's very nice to see that that was taken into consideration, not only from the parents, um, but from the staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, you can go first. Okay, I, um, so you, you're spectacular brief, as always, okay? You're very, very well presented. And it was exciting to see the feedback from the stakeholders and I echo the um, parent input that it would be nice if we could put it on the website because I believe that would, you know, show that it's being considered. So I echo her thing. Now, this is where you hate the newbies, like me. Um, you said earlier on a slide, no days and optional days.
Yes ma'am.
And I'm not, so you can only limit the number of no days because there's no pay. Or optional days, do they get paid if they don't show?
So it depends on what type of staff member um, we're talking about. If it's a teacher, and you might in- interrupt me here on this one because I might speak incorrectly. But an optional day would mean they have the earned time and they choose to not, they would take the time. So they would get paid for that. Um, but now that's different for a classified.
So if they have accrued leave, then if it's an optional day, they can take one of their vacation days.
You have answered the question with the phrase of accrued leave.
Acrued leave. But our problem is new staff members who just got off the boat, right? They just came in. They haven't accrued anything yet. So for those new people, they would have to come in for every optional workday. If it was the Monday and Tuesday before Christmas, they'd have to work those days or they'd have to take it without pay because they have no accrued.
Thank you. Um, next question. Slide seven. Can we go back to that?
Sure, that'd be great.
Um, if we're going to approve an early release, our two-year calendar, I'm fine with that. I just want to ask some differences. On the left, March is shown, but it's not shown on the right. And then just to make it easy, in um, February, on the left is a pink day and I'm just using the colors because that thing, but it's not on the right. Um, and I was just, and on the, there's a yellow day and there's not on the right. Is there a reason that twenty-two year calendars would be different?
It, it depends on where certain days fall in the month and so, and where spring break would fall. So for twenty-five, twenty-six, that's a great question, by the way. For twenty-five, twenty-six, early releases naturally kind of fell in October and March. But the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar, where Easter fell and various things, we embedded one in October and then in February, but we would not have had one in March because of the way various holidays or instructional days fall. So the calendars, as much as we can, will align just for consistency purposes, but they won't always specifically match. Yeah.
Excellent response.
Thank you.
And um, you can sigh of relief. This is the last question um, from me. Um, if we approve the calendars today, the graduations are kind of iffy. I appreciate you trying to get early college and our graduations lined up. That's excellent. If we, because of the ifiness, how would we, if we approve them today, how is the ifiness going to be handled? And is there room for public input in that ifiness?
That is an exceptional question. So what would happen anytime a calendar is approved is we would have to then come before you for an amended calendar vote. And so based on that feedback, if you approve today, the G would not appear on any of those calendars because graduation is to be determined. And then we would get that feedback. It would be up to our amazing cabinet to decide um, when they would post for review for the public and then come before you again. And I'll let her answer even more.
And if we, if we were to go with the calendar where we do graduation on Friday, the calendar won't have to change. We'll just have to put the graduation, the G there. We're not having to shift anything. So if you approve the calendar today and that is the decision that is decided upon, then we won't have to come back for approval of calendar because the calendar's not going to change. We'll just add the G for graduation.
There is a slight change. A required workday and an optional workday would flip because we would request that it's a required day for graduation.
I said that completely backwards, didn't I?
But we would certainly, even if it doesn't require board approval, we will publicly share with the board so that the public and the board can hear and have conversation regarding that.
If the graduation is the week later, it won't shift the calendar any. Uh, uh, yeah.
And I just want to applaud, echo applause for taking such detailed consideration to stakeholder input. Very, very well done.
We really do try.
Lauren.
Um, another, don't give me that look. Um, another thing about graduation a week later, I'm sure you've considered this, but I just want to put it on the record. Considering that the last day of school is right before Memorial Day for the first time, is it ever or just in a long times that we've gotten out in May? This, this year. Okay, so everybody's excited. Most people are excited about that. Um, people may be taking early vacations. Um, and some people may be like, we're, we're out of here. We're not sticking around for this. So just want to say that. Another thing, um, we hear a lot about, um, as Stacey said, that we do not consider stakeholder input, that we don't listen, we don't do what the community wants. Um, and you altered, you just looked at the feedback yesterday. We closed the survey results yesterday and you're presenting this to us today, right? You altered what you presented to us in December based on the results of that. Within how many hours? Less than twenty-four hours, correct? And I also want to say, we got a total, a grand total of one hundred and sixty-six responses to this. We have over eleven thousand students, three thousand employees. Craven County has close to a hundred thousand citizens and only a hundred and sixty-six people responded to this. I have said it, if I've said it once, I've said it a thousand times. I want people to be more engaged. I know everybody has an opinion. Say something where we give you the opportunity to give us direct feedback. Click the link and take the survey, please. You know, um, we do what we can, um, and we do respond where we can. I mean, we, we, you've done it in less than twenty-four hours. You have directly responded to the feedback that was provided. Um, and, and I don't know what else could have been done. You know, people said they didn't want the three-week break. I'm not, I wasn't a fan of the three-week break, but you've taken it off. And I don't know how much happier that we could make um, our community than, than doing this, but I just, I wish that that number was greater. Um, I really do. So I just, I wanted to say that, that's all. It's really disappointing to see that. But I'm grateful for the people that did. I think that they do echo much of the sentiments that the people, um, the opinions of the people that do share their opinions um, out in the public. I think that what we, the, the feedback that we do get right here, I think that that is much of the same feedback that's out in the community that the people that don't share with us. Um, but I just wish that people would interact with us more. Thank you.
Do we have anything from our students?
All right, um, just out of curiosity, um, so you did say that teachers are required to work two hundred fifteen days. Um, what did that require teachers to work on optional workdays?
Do you mean how, how many hours are they supposed to work or specifically? Gosh, I am so sorry. I misunderstood. Yes, that counts in the two fifteen. Everything here, except for the no day, counts in the two fifteen.
Also, um, for um, the survey, um, I feel like it's just an issue with people um, choosing, like taking five minutes out of their day to do the actual survey. Um, for example, for me, I saw the survey was on Instagram and um, for some reason, the link, you couldn't like copy and paste it. So I had to take time to like go into Safari and then like type in the link. But I did take time out of my um, day to do it, but like, just like, yeah. Yeah, but just like, um, I would say accessibility, like, I mean, we do make it really easy, but just little things like that might help.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Miller.
About the O day, I do want to clarify, just because it's an optional day, if an employee has leave, some choose to work anyway because, you know, that leave can be banked for, you know, retirement, for other times to take the whole Christmas break, the whole Easter. Um, because they feel like they have work to do and they really want to enjoy a day off when they've got work waiting. Certainly, if they're
Certainly, if they're going to work, we want them to get credit for it. So optional days, that's why it's called optional. They can work or not work. If they have the leave, they get paid for it. Um, if not, they're expected to work. Or of course, you know, there are extreme situations where they would take leave without pay, but most folks don't want to do that. But there are a lot of teachers and employees that work on optional days because that's a day to get something done. So I want to, a lot of folks just don't take the day. They, they still work.
Do we have anything from our teacher or principal in the room?
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept these calendars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please show by raising your right hand. All right, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And we will be back with graduation, um, at the next month because we'll have the principals meeting and we'll have a definite graduation dates for you then. Thank you.
All right, I have to jump around because we have a Tucker Creek presentation presenter here. So real quick, can we go ahead and move to that, Mr. Lee?
Good morning. I don't ever get the option to say good morning, almost the time, good afternoon, but anyway. Um, before I start, I did want to introduce a guest. He's right here, Drew Wilgus. He's part of the ZI-T from Smith Senate. Um, there's many people from Smith Senate. They're the architect that's designing Tucker Creek Extension. He's one of Benny and they're doing a great job. So if I say anything wrong, you'll yell and scream and hit me in the head. Um, so if you could pull up, you got it up, the next slide, please. So just, excuse me. I wanted to remind, um, the board, I think everybody knows that this is a schematic design of what we're adding. So basically Tucker is three wings and we're adding classrooms to each one of the wings. Um, it will total about five hundred students, give or take. And we do have some often ads that we're exploring to do if we have enough money. One of those is, um, Tucker needs more storage of athletic equipment. So we're looking at possibly helping with that. We're looking at putting a canopy for bus drop-off in the back. So those are some ads that we will be considering through the design process. But basically, in a very simple way, we're adding classrooms to each one of the wings. Yeah, the next slide, this is a high-level schedule. And the things I wanted to point out on this schedule is we're having our first community meeting update, um, January twenty-ninth. And prior to that meeting, there'll be a committee meeting. There's a, there's been a committee form of volunteers, people who are interested, um, focus group that want to help, um, with input. So that meeting will happen before the meeting on the twenty-ninth. It's happening at four o'clock, I believe, and the community meeting will be six o'clock that night. That's our first community update. Um, the next thing I wanted to point out is the construction documents, which are in process now, will complete sometime in April. Um, and then what we do, once we get the construction documents completed, then we move into the bid phase for the project. And all the bids are let, um, that's a pretty lengthy process, as you can imagine, because there's a lot of bidding and verification of bids and things that need to go on for that. Um, and then we move into hopefully construction start date by the end of the year. With construction complete sometime, um, May-June time of two thousand twenty-seven. And the next slide is, this is, um, I wanted to do a budget summary to date. Now, keep in mind that the total budget for the project's fifteen point three million. And as I give updates quarterly or how often the board wants to have updates, then I'll start including more of the budget, the total budget spend to give you a feel for where we, um, stand totally. But we really haven't done that much yet as far as financials, so I just wanted to let you know where we spend, where we stand currently. Um, so with the initial draw is one point four million dollars. And of that, we've spent, um, five hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Um, Smith Senate, um, we spent four hundred and ninety-five thousand to them, remaining to be paid to Smith Senate is one point four million. TerraCon, which is the company that did the GOs for us, the soil samples. What we didn't want to do is to build a building and it sink. So we have to do core samples and make sure that the, um, the land can support what we're actually constructing. Tidewater Associates is the surveyor and they're almost complete. Um, we had a little bit of delay in some of the work that they're doing, but we're pretty close to completion on that. So a little bit of work's been done, but very important work, um, as far as the completion of the total project. But again, and we have draw schedules. So basically what we do is we'll do a draw once a quarter. And what I don't want to do is run out of money to where we have bills coming in. We don't have money in the kit, kitty to pay for that. So we'll do draws, um, as we see fit and make sure that we have enough money to pay the bills. So that's sort of where Tucker stands today. We're very pleased. Um, we've had a bunch of meetings with school staff. We've had a bunch of meetings with the architect, with our facilities group, um, a lot of work behind the scenes. And what we're also trying to do is make the building accommodate the additional students. So there's some things that we're working at. We're adding a second serving line to the cafeteria. The cafeteria by design is large enough to handle the number of students, but we're adding a second serving line. We're looking at the coral space. We're looking at the band space to make sure that that's going to be able to accommodate the additional students coming into Havlock Middle. So a lot of things are being done. It's going to make this, um, school very, very nice for the students that will be attending. So any questions about any of that?
Do you have a question?
No, just excellent.
Yes, ma'am.
What is most of that remaining to be paid? The one million four hundred eighty-six?
Of the current draw? It will, as bills come in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Various things.
It would be various things, yes, ma'am. A lot of that will be architect because they have to do design documents. So we'll be getting bills along as they're completing their work. I did want to mention, one of the most important things that you may have heard from the community is the decision was made to rebrand the school. So it will have a new name, new mascot, new colors. So we're hoping to get that, um, we're, the committee, the focus group is going to have conversations about that in January. And we're hoping by February, it's on the schedule to have it completed sometime in February. We'll, we'll have the name for the new school, the mascot, the colors and things like that.
I'm looking at the drawing here, uh, Mr. Lee, and I noticed that the bathrooms were fixed from the initial drawing that I saw. Remember the very, I'm very glad to see that. Um, so, and also, uh, I don't know if you were going to mention this, uh, this is probably something that you were going to mention. I don't want to steal your thunder. Um, we have, uh, a community meeting on the twenty-ninth at, uh, Havlock High School at six P M. for the whole community, not just the, the students or the parents, but all stakeholders, um, regarding the merger of Tucker Creek and Havlock Middle School. So, yeah.
And she's right, I'll piggyback on that to, to explain the two groups. That is for anyone that's interested, whether you're a parent, whether you're a community member. We also have a focus group. That's the group of folks who volunteered. And then some folks I've met along the way and they were like, I'd like to give input. So I'm like, Jennifer, add them to that. Um, they're the ones that will be meeting at different times. And we're trying to do it the same day so that folks don't have to come out multiple times. Because I would hope that the folks, that part of the focus committee would be a part of this. This is going to be the how-to. The focus team is going to talk about, um, how to transition students from one school to another, how to make sure all students feel like it's their school. Um, do we need a name change that so all schools, all students feel apart? Do we need student input on their new mascot, on their school colors? Do we, um, take a color from each school now? And that's their new color. So all of that will be a part of the focus group. Um, I will be there facilitating the conversation, but the focus group will be the one deciding. So I want to make that really clear. This is the how-to and all the construction stuff. These are the folks you want to do that. You really don't want me around that at all. I know it looks pretty and what I like, but all the.
No, that's right, we don't want you around that.
Yeah, the, the building sink and all that, you don't want me a part of. But I certainly want to be a part of that community, having a school they can be proud of and that every student feels like they belong there. And that's the focus group's goals. So while it's combined, it's really two separate things we're working on. So I want to make that clear.
Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you, that helps. Um, I've had questions from the community, uh, regarding the transportation, especially on the farthest routes. Um, so I wonder, was there a traffic, uh, bus study done before we went down this route?
We, we haven't conducted a traffic analysis of the site yet because really and truly, all you're doing is adding, for the most part, you're adding the bus traffic from Havlock Middle, which is between six and eight buses, which in the grand scheme of things is not a lot. Um, you need to keep in mind that we, the, the travel calculations were made from Havlock Middle to Tucker. I mean, the far routes are in Harlow to get to Havlock Middle. So really, all you're adding, not all you're adding, but you're adding the distance between the two middle schools. So it's about five and a half, six miles.
It is that many miles, but it's a dozen stoplights, a railroad.
Right.
Base traffic, so.
We've done a little bit of checking on it. It's about ten minutes, give or take, depending on traffic and things like that, that will be added to the routes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I would just like to get on record, I've had a, a suggestion for a name and I think it's an excellent suggestion, uh, for it to be the Alvin West Middle School.
Okay, thank you.
And have we had input from the community to the focus group on these? The name change?
Those people are people in the, who signed up.
But what, no student input or?
That will go back to the students. That's what the focus group decided on the ninth, their first meeting. So then we will decide as far as the name of the school and all that, um, and we will go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacey.
So I just want to thank you, Mr. Lee, for all of your work behind the scenes on this. For the benefit of the public, this is actually the first significant project that we've undertaken to actually carry out the twenty nineteen facilities plan, right?
Right.
Um, and so, uh, I want to thank you for all your work behind the scenes. There's a lot that has happened, uh, in conversation with county commissioners to make sure that we secured this initial draw and what that process is going to look like to seamlessly get, uh, our money in these draws. And so I want to thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you. And I would like to commend, I see Miss Amanda's here. We've, um, we've, the process that we have in place is very seamless now. Because what the county did, and she'll correct me if I'm wrong, they set it up as a project, um, budget, which basically means the approval process is shortened on their end to when we do draws and request money, it happens more quickly. And hopefully I'm saying that correctly. So it's a very good process. It took a little bit of time to work that out, but in the grand scheme of things, it's going to help us out a lot over the build of the project. Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? All right.
Great, thank you, guys.
All right, now back to out of county field trips.
So when setting up the calendar, everything rolled over. So the first two items that were there, if you'll just go back to the, yeah, the first two, um, the early college, Craven Early College and the, um, Havlock Middle School, they were actually approved in November so they could go ahead and start fundraising for those trips. So, so the only one today I'm bringing to you is the West Craven High School. They will be going to Rock Hill, South Carolina. This is part of the, um, ROTC work that they go and, uh, no, I'm sorry. This is the Winter Guard, uh, West Craven Winter Guard. So it's the band and chorus students. There's about, um, a group of them going. There's no water activities. I have the, um, chaperone list. I have the, um, safety plans and they have submitted all of the, um, information that's required. So I would ask for your approval for this.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, show by raising your right hand.
Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Boone, you're up.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Prior to the meeting, I placed human resources report number seven in front of you all. I'm asking for a motion to get some people hired in the district for human resources report number seven. Yes, ma'am?
Move to adopt the report.
Do I have a second? All in favor, show by raising your right hand. You have approved.
All right, thank you, boy.
Heather, should we move? Let her do her presentation? All right. We want to go ahead since you came in Partners in Education. Sorry, I'm moving everything around in my day.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. This thing is right there, okay. It's like, yeah. All right, um, good morning, members of the Board of Education. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Suzanne Gifford. Um, and I'm honored to be the executive director for Craven County Partners in Education since August, mm, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, the purpose of this presentation is to share, um, the history of Craven. I need you to move to the next slide. One more. The history, uh, yep, there you go. History of Craven County Partners in Education. Share the impact of PI on the teachers, students and community. Show our community partners and support and highlight how PI's work aligns with the district's strategic goals. Let's start with PI's history and go ahead and slide through. One more, there you go. Craven County Commissioners had the vision and the foresight to invest railroad stock to create an organization to work with and support the public school system. Hence, in nineteen eighty-two, Excel of Craven County, Inc. was born. The original Articles of Incorporation lists the inaugural directors. And I tell you these names just so you have an idea of how far-reaching the support for PI has been. The inaugural, uh, directors were Richard Gorman, DDS, Thomas Horn, Nancy McAden, William Moore, Jr., Troy Smith, Jr. and Reed Underhill. The railroad stock is now invested with the North Carolina Community Foundation, Craven County affiliate, as an endowment for Craven Partners in Education. In nineteen eighty-eight, additional directors, um, were included, you're good, were included. And they include Fallon Melvin, Beck Bennett, Linda Thomas, Ray Rogers, Ricky Brown, Dale Carroll, Rick Davis, Elaine Heiner, Aileen Bundy, Rodden Curran, Carol Ellis, Janet Leaval, John Melling, Walt Smith, John Tinga, M.D., W.M. McCombs, Dana Outlaw and Calvin Stokes. I feel certain that Karai Pak, who'd been on the Board of Education, was, was supportive throughout the process as well. Now, the purpose of the organization is that it was a nonprofit organization to provide financial support. You're perfect where you are, uh, for private contributions and sources in order to stimulate an environment in the New Bern Craven County school system, in which both teachers and students can achieve highest academic potential. In nineteen eighty-nine, the organization changed its name to Craven County Partners in Education. I imagine the reason for that was, um, to demonstrate the importance of partnerships to support students and teachers and create a strong public school system. Today, our mission and commitment, uh, says stayed steadfast to the original purpose of the organization. Our mission is to enhance the quality of education for all students by encouraging community support for programs. PI is an independent, community-based organization, but is aligned with the Craven County school, school system and its strategic goals. Our board is comprised of school, business and community leaders, um, who believe in a. who believe in a strong public school system. We have some board members who are here with us this morning as well. Our commitment is to enhance, go ahead and move on, is to enhance the educational experiences of Craven County Schools, teachers, and students through classroom grants, addressing the evolving needs of individual classrooms, fostering meaningful collaborations with businesses, community leaders, and educators. The operative word there is meaningful. So we move on, Pi's programs and impact. Let's talk about Pi Grants. These grants reward creative and innovative projects in the classroom, funded by Pi's membership. So if you are a 12-month employee, you can pay $8.33 payroll deduction to be considered a member of Pi. If you're a 10-month employee with Craven County Schools, it's $10. That's the minimum. Now, of course, we will accept more, but that's minimum. Teachers can apply for these grants twice a year for up to $1,500 each time. In 2013, we awarded about $22,000, and in 2023, $36,000. It's important to note that the Pi Grants are blindly reviewed in the sense that there is no identifying information of the school or the mascot. And the reason for that is to minimize subjectivity and increase objectivity when reviewing and awarding grants. From 2013 to 2023, it's about a $14,000 increase. Now, that number's going to fluctuate depending on the success of our membership drive. The next slide, we'll talk about Pi's Partners Grants. And these are community businesses or civic organizations that support Pi and the public school system. So some of them are listed here. First one is ADK Fidelis Sigma Professional Development Grant for $2,000. Now, they choose to review the applications and award the grant. The Superintendent Exceptional Education for Exceptional Children, thank you, Dr. Miller. That grant is for $1,000, and that is reviewed by the EC Department here at Craven County Schools and awarded by them. Aspire to Inspires for Math and Science, the funder reviews and awards those grants. Then we have the Bate Foundation Individual School Grants. Up to $5,000 for a total of $30,000 is awarded. The focus of the Bate Foundation Individual Grants are athletics, arts, music, health, and fitness. On the next slide, you'll also see that New Bern Women's Club, been around a long time, that they support us with $2,800 this year. They review and award the grant. Optimum Tech Grant, $3,000. They delegate the review and the award to Pi. And when I say Pi, I mean the Board of Directors. International Paper Math and Science, $2,000, Pi reviews those. And then Bate Foundation Beginning Teacher Store, another $30,000. So a minimum of about $60,000 comes from the Bate Foundation in support of our public school system. The Beginning Teacher Store is an incentive-based program in that if the teachers volunteer or they go and they do something extra, they'll receive a token. This year, last few years, it's been light bulbs. So they get so many light bulbs, and then they can take it to the Beginning Teacher Store, and they can trade that in for classroom supplies. So really, this program serves as, or this store, serves as a retention tool for teachers. Because only teachers who are three years and under in their employment are eligible to shop at that store. That's huge, right? When you're talking today with the budgets and the salary concerns, that they do not have to reach into their pockets for additional classroom supplies. The Partner Grants, in 2013, we awarded $83,000. Fast forward to 2023, $126,000. Now, that reflects a $43,000 increase, but also recognize that that number can fluctuate, depending on our partners and their ability to provide grants. The next slide shows the Beginning Teacher Store. I also want to acknowledge that Cheryl Martini, that's what that store is named, who that store is named after, she was an attorney at Warden Smith, who was very supportive of Pi, as well as the Beginning Teacher Store. The next slide talks about Pi-sponsored grants. So some grants require 501(c)(3), which we are, to apply. One of them is with the ABC Stores, Craven County ABC Stores, to support the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program for $30,000. They also do a summer camp. The North Carolina Community Foundation, Craven County affiliate, $12,000. Again, classroom supplies or programs. Bosch, $24,000. Corporate community giving up to 10 or more. And then Toyota Teacher of the Year Car, that they get to drive, which you are driving, for a year. Let's talk about the impact. For 2024, an estimated $200,000 in grant awards to benefit our students and teachers' educational experiences. An estimated $25,000 in the Teacher of the Year Toyota Car. An estimated $68,000 in event sponsorships. And finally, an estimated $92,000 in in-kind. Now, I went back and did a little more research. And since 2010, Pi has awarded an estimated $2.5 million in grants. We've raised over $543,000 in sponsorships. And we have about $424,000 in in-kind gifts in 13 years. Significant impact in our community, from our community to our teachers and our students. As you can see by our impact, Pi serves as a bridge between the community and our schools, fostering a culture of collaboration and shared responsibility for a strong public school system. Next slide shows how the impact truly is unlimited, right? We benefit the teachers, we benefit the families and the children. An investment in Pi is an investment in our workforce, our community, and in our future. Let me tell you a little bit about our partners and their support, because we could not do this without them. Let me switch on to the next slide or two. Pi's annual luncheon brings partners and educators together to be inspired by keynote speaker. This year, in 2025, we're set for May 28, Wednesday. This event not only strengthens our relationships with current partners, but also initiates new community partnerships. Stuff the Bus on the next slide at Staples, that's August 16, 2025. Last year, we brought in about $85,000 in donations and in-kind gifts. Those supplies go to students in need across all of our schools. The next slide will show you who some of our sponsors are, so you can see all of the community businesses, organizations that are invested in Pi and ultimately invested in our students and our teachers. The next slide talks about Pancakes for Pi. Next year, this year, I should say, 2025, it's on December 6. That's an awesome organization. Let me say this different, it's an awesome event in the sense that it is so community-focused. Morgan's provides the venue, they provide the staff, and they provide the food. So anything that is made from selling the delicious pancakes or proceeds that go back to Pi. We do pay for the advertising and the promotion for the event through sponsorships. This last year, we brought in about $19,000. The next slide talks about Pi's ambassadors. We could not do what we do without the investment and commitment of each of our ambassadors. They are our success. They are the bridge between Pi and each school. So every school has one ambassador, and their responsibility, and this is volunteering, their responsibility is to disseminate information, coordinate membership drive, sell the lunch tickets, and volunteer at events. We absolutely value our ambassadors. Let's talk about alignment with CCS, Craven County Schools. So Craven County Schools created a new strategic plan covering 2025 through 2029. I've put very succinctly their goals, our goals, let me say it that way. Goal one, successful students. Every student will achieve their highest potential, right? That's what we all want. Pi supports that. Pi supports that through grants, Stuff the Bus, the DARE program, and go on, donations. Goal two, premier professionals. Provide support and training to retain employees. It's so important right now, because we know so many educators are leaving the field. Not because they want to, they feel like they have to. Pi supports that by the professional development grants, as well as by the luncheon and the Beginning Teacher Store. Goal three, superior systems, create school environments that are inviting, safe, modern, and conducive to learning. Pi supports this through grants and sponsored grants, as well as through the annual luncheon. And finally, a committed community, which is where I fell, this presentation fell on the agenda, right? Build and enhance community partnerships. We do this through the luncheon, Pancakes for Pi, Stuff the Bus, grants, donations, in-kind gifts, the list goes on. So it's real important to understand that although we're separate from the school system, we are integrated, we are aligned, we are here to serve and work with Craven County Schools. So call to action. We invite you to attend upcoming luncheons. I invite everybody in this room, anybody who's watching, to come to the luncheon, to come to our events. We invite you to help spread the word about what we do and encourage community partnerships. And what's not up there, but is going to be coming out of my mouth in a few minutes, is to become a Pi member, to join Pi. You can do that online. You can, you can give me a call, email me, have more conversation. Happy to do that, happy to do that. I'd like to thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share Pi's mission and impact with you all. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. On the last slide, I promised Brian, the very last slide, is my contact information. We do need to put a period between Suzanne.Gifford for email. I'm located at Brinson Memorial Elementary, and my phone number is listed up there. Please reach out, happy to provide more. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Jennifer, Stacy?
Good morning.
Oh, hi, I was all ready to sit back down, hello.
I know, I've got a question. I want to, first of all, you and I have known each other a long time, and I want to thank you for being here and for taking on this role, it's an important one. And I just have a couple of questions. I think for the benefit of public and our staff, if you could give us an approximate dollar value, I mean, how much in terms of payroll deductions are our teachers and staff contributing to the bottom line of Partners in Education?
Right, and I get a monthly report, fiscal, finance department, and each month, it's about $1,800 each month.
Okay. So annualized, then?
Thirty, twenty-eight, yeah. One, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and is that, is that typical over time?
From what I have seen, yes, from what I have seen.
Okay, so as a percentage of your total contributions back into the school system, that's probably, what percentage approximately do you think?
The payroll deduction's 100%.
No, no, okay, but in terms of, you're then, you've got all these other avenues that you're using, grants from other entities, that you're passing through to teachers and staff for their classrooms and that kind of thing. So as a percentage of the total donations that you make, do you have any idea what?
I would want to, yes, before I say it out loud, I'd want to check that.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Any other?
Thank you so much, Suzanne, for coming this morning and telling the good news about Pi. I am a little biased, but I appreciate that you are getting in front of the public and some members of the school system who aren't involved with Pi to tell them about the financial contribution that Partners in Education makes directly to our classrooms. And I know that there is a history, and you talked about the Pi Grants specifically, which are $1,500 grants, and a big chunk of that comes from our Pi memberships, which in recent years, I will just speak over maybe the last five years, has been about $20,000. And I think if you're a teacher, you can appreciate how far $20,000 could go directly in your classroom. And so I appreciate you for the work that you're doing and the board for their work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Lauren?
I just wanted to say, I haven't interacted much with you at all yet since you took over. I mean, I've said hello a couple of times, but I think that was a really wonderful presentation, and I think that your aura is really nice. Yeah, I mean, the way that you told him to go to the next slide, it just was, it was, you kept my attention, and I think that that's really important. And I think I'm excited about the work that you're going to do, and I'm really looking forward to the Pi Luncheon, it's one of my favorite events every year. Yeah, so thank you for everything that you're doing, and thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
And I always take this opportunity to say how thankful I am personally as a previous teacher who had multiple Pi Grants, the opportunity to be able to support, and every superintendent chooses their thing, and mine, of course, was exceptional need students. But also our continued partnership, and I want to, I know you mentioned it, but again, her office is now at Brinson. We provided a much larger space, copy machines, hopefully a better space instead of a little cramped office, because stuff was like in the hall, it wasn't enough space. So we will continue to support Pi in whatever ways we can. And she knows, all she has to do is reach out to me if she needs something, and certainly we're there to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next is School Nutrition, who is also providing us lunch today.
I see that between you and delicious school lunch.
All right. Good morning, Craven County Board of Education, I'm Lauren Wayn. I'm here to present an update and just an overview of the school nutrition program. And be aware that I do speak really fast, and I don't take offense to telling me, please slow down. All right, so just to give you a little bit about my background, yesterday I hit a milestone, for those of you in the room, hold your breath, I just turned 50. And I heard at 50 years old, you can say what you want. So that's what I heard, that's what I heard. Thank you, all right, thank you, thank you. So I am a registered dietitian, and I have a master's degree in dietetic administration. What that means is that my schooling was tailored towards school nutrition and industries that geared towards feeding people food. I worked in community nutrition for three years, and then I became a district RD in Bibb County in Georgia for, since 2012 to 2016. Then we moved to North Carolina, and I served in Pitt County as a supervisor for a little under a year, and I've been the director here in Craven County since 2018. This is the organizational structure for the nutrition department. And as you would see, that I have an office administrator and an assistant, Laura Millenex, and Dr. Miller will concur that I really don't tell Laura what to do, she tells me what to do, like Jennifer probably, I mean, Heather tells you what to do. And this is my office support, and I have them here, some of them here today. We do have a Craven Q, which we do some tailgates, and we do some, a lot of catering, and the board has graciously supported that effort, and the district has supported that efforts as well. So what stands us apart, like what do we offer students in Craven County? So the first thing that we offer is universal free breakfast, and that's breakfast for all students at no cost. This started after the pandemic to further support families after the USDA waivers expired. Approximately $50,000 per year is absorbed by the school nutrition department. So what I'm basically saying here is that because we don't charge students for breakfast, our department basically funds that for students to eat at no cost. The District-wide Student Testing Food Festival to help students to be a part of choosing what they would like to see on the menu. So that is unique to Craven County, I don't know, some of you have attended that event. We get a sample of about 10 students from each school in the district, and they participate in this testing and tell us, hey, we want to see this on the menu, we like this, or we don't like that, so. And that started in 2019, except for the pandemic year. We also hold a robust farm-to-school week. So usually, most schools participate in farm-to-school, that means we are supporting local agriculture. However, Craven, in Craven County Schools, we do that throughout the school year, but one specific week out of the school year, we specifically- But one specific week out of the school year, we specifically use ninety percent of our foods that we serve to students are local, meaning North Carolina. And some of it, some of the food that we procure is literally right here in Craven County. So that really brings back, generates funds for the economy and in Craven County and for some of our families here in, in our community. Just to let you know that, let me, let me just continue to the next slide, please, to number four. Lunch, this is another thing that we offer here in Craven County, lunch at no cost to sixteen schools, which is CEP, Community Eligibility Provision. And then we also have an after-school snack program that eight schools are utilizing presently. And we also offer fresh fruits and vegetables to twelve of our fifteen elementary schools. This is a program that's really designed just for elementary schools. And just to let you know that of these programs, the last three of them, it's an application process. So USDA doesn't automatically enroll schools into fresh fruits and vegetables into CEP. We have to apply based on certain criterias. All right, so next slide, please. So what sets my team apart? So what you would see here is a comparison and I have the twenty eighteen, nineteen year because that's when we first started. That's when I first started here as the director in Craven County Schools. And this was the projected budget, what, what they anticipated prior to, prior to me starting in August of twenty eighteen. The budget is done in the spring of that year. So, and then I showed you what actually was the outcome for that year as well. So what was projected, we excelled, we exceeded in terms of what was projected for that, for that year. And the reason I did that, and I don't have numbers, but I did have, I do have some numbers for you, is that when I started, it was two weeks before Hurricane Florence. It was two weeks before her, on the first time as a director. And, and we had school closures, one of the schools were closed for a month. And we also operated and ran the shelters, meaning feeding the community during that time. I, and after that, you know, was the pandemic. So I didn't know what a normal year looks like. And USDA also says that when we are going through these abnormal years, they don't reimburse us. We don't participate in the regular national school lunch program. So the reason why I could compare twenty eighteen, nineteen, because that was the only normal year since the last couple of years. Meaning that we were operating under what we call summer food service program, then seamless summer option. And then they took us back to the national school lunch program. Those rates are looked very differently. So if I were to project you and show you those numbers, you would say, wow, you have a lot more money in those years and why did it decrease? And because you have about a dollar and twenty-five cents more for the reimbursement rate under those programs versus what we are offered now. So, so I can definitely provide you with the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty numbers and I have them here. The total of reimbursement was eight point five million. Because from March to June, we operated under summer feeding. And also summer feeding months goes a little bit longer, so it goes till September. So those numbers are very hard to pull. Then twenty to twenty twenty-one, we operated under quarter of it seamless summer option, then summer food service program, which equated to six point five million dollars. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, seven point six million, twenty-two, twenty-three, seven million, twenty-three, twenty-four, seven point five. And to date, for this school year, we had three point five million of reimbursement. So the projections for this year, based on USDA reimbursement, we are looking at about seven point one million. For summer feeding, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. If you go back to the slide where the projection for school year eighteen, nineteen, summer feeding reimbursement was projected at seventy-five thousand dollars. Here where we have come, meaning that we find ways to feed more students in the community. Then we have USDA commodities, this is set for us based on how many meals you've served the previous year. You get a reimbursement amount based on meals served. And that, that's determined, and again, if you compare that from when I first started at four hundred and twenty-four thousand to five hundred and thirty-three, it means that we're serving more meals. Meal sales and then supplemental sales and then the fund balance appropriation, again, if you compare those, the fund balance appropriation is money that we have left over in our reserves and we put that into the budget in the upcoming year. Next slide, please. So what sets our community apart? We have three regular donors to our angel fund account. So we have an account at every school that we use for students who did not qualify. It's not a CEP school, they don't qualify to eat at no cost and, and their parents refuse to send them with money on their accounts. So we have a school right now and, and the school said, please mention my name, please tell them how much I support this. So we have a school, New Bern High School, that we started up the school year with eighteen hundred dollars on that angel fund account. As of now, we have three hundred dollars left. So we have students that habitually needs to eat but don't have money on their accounts. And the board policy, your policy states that when a student had, they have, they can charge this much to the account. And after that charge limit has met, then you serve them an alternate meal. And that ultimate, me, altern, alternative meal is a fruit roll in a milk. And USDA says that that's a reimbursable meal. However, we refuse to serve them that. So then what do we do? Just think, consider that in your, in your thought process as to why we do what we do. Because there, there's no one in my team that would ever give a child that alternate meal or refuse to feed them. And then kids know that, then you also have the families who know that and will not send money for their students. So those students will continue to not have money on their account, knowing that they will receive a meal. What would you do? As John Kinyonius would say, what would you do? So my request from the Craven County Board of Education, volunteer in the cafeterias. This helps gain perspective and an appreciation for the hard work that goes into preparing meals for students. The one thing that's very hurtful to my team is when we hear that food isn't good. Well, if the food isn't good, then seventy-five percent of our students that participate in the school lunch program, then seventy-five or twenty-five. When we, when we started, we were at fifty-six percent of lunch participation, now we at seventy-five percent. So if the food isn't good, then only twenty-five percent of the students think that. And there's a reason why. As a dietitian, I know exactly, and if you want to know why, then come and talk to me after the fact. Attend an event when possible to show support for the effort of the school nutrition employees. The best way you can tell us that you care about what we do is by coming. Occasionally eat lunch from a school cafeteria. If you want to know what keeps me fit, I eat school lunch. I eat school lunch. So for those who say what school lunch is making my kids gain weight, well, I eat school lunch, ask my team, just about every day. Help support my effort to serve each and every student in Craven County and the state of North Carolina, free school lunch. Talk to me after. I serve on the School Nutrition Association National Board and in the, I'm the Southeast Regional Representative. And we advocate for getting meals for all students at no cost. Because then it eliminates the burden of parents wanting, or student, actually, this is about the student. Coming to school wondering, huh, especially the younger ones, did my mom remember to put money on my account? Now they can't really, they have no, no phones, so they can't access their, their parents. So then just think about this, I'm sitting there all morning long thinking, do I have money to eat? A child's responsibility should not be whether I have money to eat, but I'm coming here to learn. And, and then think about this too, my next, my next, I like to jump to things, think about this too. When last have you been somewhere where you were required to stay for six, seven, eight hours? You didn't have transportation to leave, you didn't have the ability to leave and you didn't have access to that meal. All right, so finally, the rabbit effect, not what you're thinking. The rabbit effect is a group of people, it's a, it's a scientist who felt the need to study what food bad eaten have on, on humans, but he started the study with rabbits. So he took the exact same background, exact same age of these rabbits and gave them into smaller groups with, to a technician to feed these rabbits exactly at the same time, the exact same meal. And after the study was done, he was very surprised that one group of rabbits, for some reason, their health of outcome was better than the other groups. So he, being the good scientist that he is, said, there is something that's skewing these, the, the, the numbers. So he went back, he repeated the study, this time paying attention to the technicians and what care they were providing these meals to the rabbits. There was one technician, the group that the rabbits had a great health outcome, that wasn't just feeding those rabbits, she was loving on them. That's the rabbit effect. That's a team of school nutrition employees that love the students in Craven County, that isn't just feeding bad meals to them, but they have feeding them with love. So I propose to the Craven County Board of Education, support them. Don't make them feel less because as you go into these cafeterias, you would see they know the kids by name. They know what they need. And that is love, that's the rabbit effect. Questions?
Lauren, I'll just work this way.
You're one of my favorites, I swear. I sing your praises every chance that I get because if you can't see your passion, like you have to be blind. And I don't know if any of my new fellow board members have seen her present or have interacted with her before. But this is why I love you and I urge you guys to go to any school nutrition event that we have. Honestly, I wish that Craven Q could open up an actual restaurant. It is some of the best food. And when I'm going through the school menu with my kids every week and I'm telling them what their, what the options are, my eighth grader buys lunch every single day, he will find something that he likes every day. And my elementary school students, they're like, no, I don't like that, I'm gonna take. But there are certain days that they buy, every Wednesday, they're buying that Chick-fil-A sandwich. But I see like the, the pizza grilled cheese that we got to try first. I'm still trying to sell that to my little ones. The Jamaican jerk chicken, I'm trying, I convinced them to try that, the chicken pot pie, I convinced them to try that.
You would be having those today too.
What?
You have, you would be having chicken pot pie as one of the options today too.
My point is, is that I am, I'm thankful that I get to, to interact with you this way and that I get the experience with you and your team. And that I get to delve into that with my kids and that their daily experience in the cafeteria. And I'm just, I'm so proud of you and the work that you and your team do and I'm so grateful to have you guys here. And happy late, happy late birthday. You don't look a day over twenty-five.
Thank you, my head is growing, Lauren, thank you.
So I'm, I'm just gonna second the birthday wishes and thank you for everything that you do. And I would encourage new board members to understand and to go and observe a little bit up close, not just what you do in cafeterias and what your staff does. They are amazing with a first-name basis with all of our students in those cafeterias. The way that they interact with them, checking on them, just, it, it's really personalized service. That's the only way I can explain it. And all of this happens with really, really antiquated actual facilities. Like the school nutrition warehouse literally sits in a flood zone and is, it dates back to the nineteen forties. I'm not even kidding. It is completely ridiculous that as we sit here in twenty twenty-five, after the hurricanes we've suffered, that, that you're having to continue to deal with that. And that we as a system have to continue to pay additional transportation costs because we don't have the ability to store the food that we actually need during the school year to support our students. And I'm, if I've said it once, I'm gonna say it a thousand times. We cannot appropriately educate a child who doesn't come to school or comes to school and is hungry. And so I just want to thank you for what you do because we all know that that is, it's fundamental to what we do. That's just the reality of the, the day and age that we live in. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
I think it's undeniable that a child needs to have food available to them if we expect them to learn. I do have a little bit of a concern over the amount of the fund balance that is contributed to the nutrition budget because of the fund balance that comes from the county. Most of it goes to supplement the nutrition budget. And so that has increased, it's almost twenty-five percent of the budget. And almost, it has increased year after year, I expect that, I know there's inflation. I just would expect some.
Let me, let me take that, go ahead. So the, the word fund balance, I knew that might would cause an issue and I was gonna speak to it. It's their fund balance, it's their savings account, it's not the school district's fund balance, that's a separate thing. This is money they had left over in the balance of their funding that they use for the next year. It's not our fund balance.
Their fund balance is not coming from the county's balance.
School nutrition is an enterprise budget, meaning we make the money that we, we spend. And actually, we pay money to the district to operate. So almost half a million dollars a year, we pay the district to operate, to, to feed kids. So we are self-sufficient and the money, it's not supposed to be for profit. So the money that we have left over, we have to allocate it in a fund bal, in, into the budget.
And, and as efficient as they are, they actually prevent us from having to dip into any county money or anything because they make the money back, one thing is the, the quality of meals. And I will say two things, I was in the cafeteria yesterday, I'm just amazed with the folks. We took pictures, they all wanted pictures together, so it really does mean a lot when we go in the buildings. But like, well, I, I spent, of course, time with the special need students, ones that weren't, weren't able to know, they knew every number, but they also worked with them to be independent, to start to learn, to put in their own number. So it was just a really amazing thing to watch. And the other thing is the back-to-school celebration they have in school nutrition. And I mean, just the excitement in that room, and that comes from great leadership. The folks are only as good as the leader that, that leads them all. And I would say the excitement you see with her, her today is the excitement you see when they do any activity or any event. They, they, they do such a great job that, and I was gonna say that again, they raise enough money that they can supplement the next year if things go up. And, and they have been very conscientious about raising meal prices because they want to be supportive to our families. But because they do such a good job and they're so careful with their budget, they don't waste. They didn't actually count french fries yesterday, but they were close to it. Because they, they don't want to waste food. And so when I asked the students, I'm gonna eat lunch today, what do you recommend? Every one of the kids recommended what they were eating and why that was the best meal. And you had kids eating salad with like grilled chicken and they were telling me why I need to do that and what dressing I needed to pick. So every one of them, none of the kids said, don't eat this, it's not, every one of them said, you need to get this. No, 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 she needs a salad because this is good and you can get the French dressing. So they really enjoy their meals and it's more than just nutrition, it's, they feel loved in that cafeteria. So I, I just had to say kudos to her folks.
Thank you so much, thank you guys, thank you.
Just one question. You said in your comments, and I'm hoping I heard wrong, we don't participate in the national food lunch program?
No, we do, that's, the program that we operate is the national school lunch program. During the pandemic, USDA had us participate in the summer food service program and then they switch us to the seamless summer option. USDA have several different programs and based on what is going on and what waiver, it's based on the reimbursement. Those programs have different reimbursements attached to it. And based on what they want to reimburse us or offer us, they make us do the application for those specific ones. So, but, but currently, because we are in a normal state, we are operating under the national school lunch program.
Okay, thank you, I love your enthusiasm.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank you for everything you do, I've always been a fan of yours. I think you do a great job in everything that you do, even with like our Ag Week and how that whole thing goes down. I, I mean, it's just, personally, I think it's amazing. And to any board member, I mean, probably I learn more about the school system when I go and get a meal from the school and sit down with students in the cafeteria and they will tell you everything. And so a good way to learn is just to take a, a day or a lunchtime and drop into a school and have lunch with some students. And you'll, you'll learn all kinds of things.
And if there's something we could do better, we are open because we want to be the best, not just in North Carolina, but in the country. So please let us know. Thank you.
All right, well, if there are no other comments, we are now going to recess for lunch.
Any idea about how long so we can, folks can know, forty-five minutes, thirty minutes?
Let's say forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minute break.
I have a question. Now, we've talked about this before too. On the place where they store the food? The warehouse. I couldn't remember what. Anyway, who, who bills or pays for that facility? Is that, because she talked about there being an entity.
It's a facility that we.
Yes, Craven County.
It's adjacent to the bus garage.
Okay. And so, Craven County School System is responsible for that facility. So, it would be a decision that the board
Oh, yeah.
to upgrade or move that. That's not, that's not her.
Correct.
She would like a different, she would like a better.
Kind, right. I just wanna make sure. That's what I understood. I wanted to make sure I was right.
So, people have increased transportation costs. It would actually make everyone's life easier.
Right. Something else. Right.
People shipments.
Right.
And have more space.
And more space.
We can save on transportation.
Okay. But you have a facility for it. So, that would be something that the board would have to figure out. To do something. Okay. I wanna make sure I was understanding. Okay, thank you.
Y'all need to go get lunch. Craven Q really does.
Oh, dude, they're awesome.
I wonder if it'd take out from the Chelsea. I said, I'm wondering if it'd take out from the Chelsea. This is a work. Last time she had like a bottle. This last time she had. Did you raise a question?
Yeah, so I got counsel.
For all these schools, um...
Everything you do for us, I greatly appreciate. Happy- Thank you so much for all the work you do.
I'm sorry to get in conflict because they always go out on the-
For all these schools, um-
You better talk upstairs.
Everything you do for us, I greatly appreciate.
Happy school board appreciation, man. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all the hard work and things you do for our schools.
You can't hear it on the speaker system, right?
I want to thank the dedicated-
Okay, thank you.
From a great lunch. Thank you, school nutrition. And we will move on to budget amendments.
I think we'd like to do a little celebration for the board if that's okay since it's pulled up. So as a part of Board Appreciation Month, we continue to talk about getting feedback and from the people closest to the work. It's also a part of educating our students and staff what the board does. They think, I think sometimes you guys live up here. Or they'll say, I'm going to the Board of Education. I'm like, no, you're going to Central Office. The Board of Education is seven people. So anyway, Ms. Wagner worked hard to get a video for some of the folks you serve to show their appreciation. So we would like to play that for you now.
Thank you so much for all the work you do for all these schools. Everything you do for us, I greatly appreciate.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for all the hard work and things you do for our schools.
I want to thank the dedicated public servants, our board members for everything that you do for our student success and governance and providing all the resources that are needed. It is an unsung task that you do each and every day. May not be appreciated by everyone, but I want to thank you for everything that you do for the success of our students, our staff, and the support and providing all the resources that are needed.
On the behalf of the Transportation Department, we would like to thank all the board members for the amazing job that y'all do each and every day for Craven County Schools.
From the capes here at West Craven High School, we would like to thank our school board for all that you do. We appreciate y'all so much.
I'm thankful for the school board so they can keep us safe and we can get school days off for holidays.
Thank you for everything the school board does for us, the school and everything.
And I want to say thank you for all your hard work from Have Lot Middle School.
Thank you so much for supporting us in everything that you do.
From our staff, students, and community, you're the best.
We here at Massey L. T. will like to thank you all for your support.
We want to take the opportunity to thank our school board for their support of our students and our staff.
We want to say thank you for your dedication and time in making our school system a great place to work and students to learn.
Thank you.
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 Thank you from Reganis Elementary.
Thank you.
From Greetside.
Thank you to Jennifer for all that work. And Brad.
All right, now we go. Now we go on the budget.
Good afternoon. I don't have any rabbit effect things or anything too exciting, but I'm going to present what I have for you. And if I need to get a cough drop, I'm sorry. I'm just getting off of this crud. So today I'm presenting our first budget amendment, and this amendment is broken down by purpose code, just as our budget resolution is. The first column shows the original budget. The center column shows the revision. And the final column shows the amended budget. So for instance, Fund One, if you look at it, the amendment was 1,549,397, which gave us a total of 100,299,891. Now I could go through and read all these, but I think you guys are pretty adept at reading, so. And you've had time to look at it. So are there any questions?
You have a question?
Yeah, I have to learn to read to turn the mic on. Anyway, on the first one, the state fund. Yes. You're talking about moving 978,000 and rounding out of the system-wide support services into the instructional, which is fine. I'm not questioning that. My question is, what's not getting done? Because we moved the 978,000. I can look at the backup documentation and tell you exactly what that move was for. It could have been to cover something that was unexpected. We've had a few unexpected things that have happened in our budget, but that could be that. But I will get back to you as to what that exact move was, because we have all the backup documentation in order to put this together. So it would be pretty simple. Okay, and then the special revenue fund. It looks like we're going to go against fund balance. Is it possible to find out exactly what that's going for? Yes, I can find that out for you. Thank you. And that was special revenue fund, the 212,000? Yes, ma'am. All right, I will get that to you.
Any other discussion? Stacy.
Okay, so Cullen, can you clarify back to, under the state public school fund?
Yes.
The 978,653 revision? So. I think, so Ms. Mason is asking, I believe, why that revision was necessary? Is it possible that we just didn't get all of the funding in that line item?
No, that's not my question at all. My question is, it was put in the original line for a purpose. So if we move the money away from that purpose, what is not getting done? So you're stating that it was moved in, it was started in the 6,000 series purpose code, and we obviously needed it into the 5,000 purpose code, and so what is being sacrificed? What's the, yeah, what's being sacrificed? That's my question. Okay. And what's being reduced and, yeah.
Right, but my question is, it's not actually obvious. It's obvious that there's revision. It's not obvious it's going into 5,000.
Well, there's no other revisions under 7,000 or 8,000, so. Does that make sense?
So it has to be going into 5,000 is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please show by raising of your right hand. Motion passes. Next, mid-year budget update.
All right, so. Mid-year budget spending review will accompany each one of our board amendments, which is something that we haven't done in the past. We've changed this process, which will provide greater transparency. So for instance, in April, when we bring the second amendment, which is 75% of where we're at, you'll be able to see the spending allocations at 75%. We just thought that would be a good idea for you to be able to keep up. This review will guide our planning at the remaining of the fiscal year, as well as help us begin the budgeting process for fiscal year '26. As I've mentioned before, we had unexpected challenges that have arisen this year that have impacted our budget. We had extensive cleanup needed at one of our schools due to a moisture issue, a significant increase in payment to charter schools, a spike in property insurance costs, and a breakdown of our athletic training contract requiring us to turn to a more expensive alternative. Our total spending for the first half of the year amounts to 80,309,816. In front of you, you'll see a breakdown of spending in each PRC and their corresponding fund. So let's take a closer look at the details and the outliers of each of these PRCs. Our greatest fund is our state funding, Fund One. Some outliers that I'd like to point out are PRC 12. You'll see that that one is way over 50% because they do the contract at the beginning of the year for all the schools. And so that's a blank PO that takes up all their funds. PRC 16 is at 100%. These funds are to be spent by September 30th, and they were. And as a matter of fact, Friday, we received the funds for the next round. So they'll be getting more money there. PRCs 46 and 48 are bonuses that are set to be paid in January. PRC 40, we just received those funds, so nothing's been expensed yet. And PRC 61, which is supplies and materials for schools, we set deadlines for the schools to spend their supplies. We say, spend your state supply money first. And we set the deadline of December 31st. We wanted them to have 80% spent, and they have 75% spent. So it's better than, I mean, it could be better, but they're getting there. PRC 73 for connectivity has an open PO to byte speed, which consumes these funds. And PRC 131 covers edmentum for CVA and curriculum from McGraw-Hill and Houghton-Mifflin-Hartcourt. So moving on to Fund Two, our local fund, there are a few items to highlight. PRC 14 is nearly 94% spent due to early payment to the Division of Vocational Rehab. And that's about all that fund is used for. O36, which is charter schools, is nearing depletion primarily due to the opening of Riverside. So that will be something that we'll have to adjust next year in our budgeting. PRC 706 for local transportation, this is mostly allocated to some diesel purchases. Board of Education, PRC 825 included memberships and conference fees that are paid early in the year. So it looks like it's kind of top-heavy there, so you don't have that spending later on. PRC 835 for property insurance, as I had mentioned, we were impacted by a significant increase in property insurance. And finally, PRC 50 for printing. They have open POs for equipment as well as the copy machines. So those look heavily used. Overall, local, we're at approximately 53% usage. But if spending continues at this rate, we may deplete our entire $9 million fund balance factored into the budget. Federal funds are a unique case. These funds typically don't arrive until later in the year, which means departments must play catch-up when they do come in. Additionally, if carryover funds from the previous year don't cover all the payroll for the current year, we have to code all of it to local. So that overinflates our local reports. Then when the time comes when the funds come in, we recode everything back to federal. It's a kind of a lengthy process. So you will see when I go through one of the federal PRCs that it's still kind of low because that process hadn't been done yet. Some of the other ones had been, but 60 had not been. So 60, like I said, is the one that has yet to be recoded. It's also important to note that PRCs 111 and 115 are nearly 100% spent because September 30th is the deadline for them to spend their funds. However, there are more other PRCs. However, there are more other PRCs which we haven't yet received, so their spending is minimal for now. Most of their funding came in the very end of November and in December. So they're playing catch-up. Fund Four is pretty simple. We had the iPad lease, and that's our outlier, and we paid that in September, so that took up all those funds. And then school nutrition is a little different. So Fund Five has one PRC. So in order for you to get a better look at the breakdown, I broke it down by object code. The skilled trades was over, and after talking to the bookkeeper, they said that they had a contract with Surf Pro for maintenance that when the budget was created, and they didn't know whether they were going to hire a technician or not. They ended up hiring a technician. So that is in the skilled trade. So that's something that we'll have to adjust. Object Code four eighteen covers their link software for accounting, and that is paid early in the year. Or for fifty-one, food costs are up, so that's going to be a little higher than fifty. And Object Code four fifty-three for food processing supplies, there's a blanket PO with Cisco. And overall, we're currently at fifty-two percent spent. But remember, like I mentioned with local, this includes a two million dollars in fund balance if continued to be spent. Finally, Fund Eight covers restricted budgets and reimbursable expenses, notably PRCs thirty-one, fifty-five, eight oh four, and eight fifty-five. And they are reimbursed by our schools or external organizations such as Craven Community College for items like early college computers, equipment, and substitutes. PRC three oh six is the opposite side of the federal oh sixty. That is where we have coded all of the payroll that we didn't have any money for. So now we're in the process of recoding back to sixty, so that will not be at the hundred and some percent it's at right now, most definitely. By taking a good look at our current spending, we can address any issues proactively to protect our district's financial health and to ensure that we continue to provide high-quality education to our students. Does anybody have any questions? I think there was a question about SROs. Yes, so SRO funding comes from State oh thirty-nine, which we have not yet received, Local oh thirty-nine, which is budgeted, and State sixty-nine, which we have already spent.
Do you get funding from the county as well for the SROs?
The funding from the county is wrapped up in our Fund Two allocation. So our Local oh thirty-nine has part of that in there.
And then, can you tell me some of the things that are in that indirect cost that are coded to that indirect cost in the nutrition budget in the Fund Five?
No, you're fine, you're fine. They do their own indirect cost calculations and then send us the funds. But if it's, it's my understanding that it's I could throw you numbers, like four elevens and payroll codes and taking out four eighteen, but that doesn't make any sense. So it's purchases for supplies, payroll, a takeout, equipment, and then as a percentage of that, that we receive back. Can I grab a tissue?
I thought that State also sent money for pass-through for the charter schools?
They do not send money for the charter schools. That all comes out of, out of local.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
As I told Dr. Botwell, newbies are a pain in the neck, so. So IDEA funding, which is the federal EC thing, that was shown out of local and not federal? Is there a reason?
Out of local?
Yeah, Fund Two.
Right. Which PRC are you looking at?
Um, it says, scroll down, one nineteen.
Oh, that's federal. Oh, wait. Oh, I asked Shontay, and she said that the federal money had not been dropped yet, so we had to charge it to one oh three, one fourteen.
So this is just covering it?
It's just, yep, it's a holding tank.
And then my last question is, in the future, is it, when we're buying positions, is it possible to show the estimated number of positions we think we're buying?
That we're buying for?
Like, for teachers? Correct. Correct. Thank you for helping me with my vocabulary. I'm old. I acknowledge that. I'm the oldest one in the room, with the exception of Paul.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else?
All right. Jennifer Dacey?
Okay, so on Fund One, so line item oh thirteen, the CTE months of employment.
Yes.
Can you find out, or can we get some follow-up from the pertinent person? If any months were rolled over? And if so, when that happened?
Such as an ABC transfer? Okay.
Because it would it would roll from thirteen to fourteen, I believe, right? And then in oh fourteen, it's showing forty-one thousand and POs outstanding. So I was curious as to when those were done. Timing-wise. And then on Fund Three,
Okay.
Oh seventeen, the top. Vocational ed is only twenty-five percent spent mid-year, which does seem low. I mean, there's some others on there that are a little low.
Yes, because they've just received their funds, so they're doing the catch-up.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my question.
And I forgot to point out that all the SER funds, which are one eighty-one to two oh four, have been depleted, because we no longer have SER or reverted back.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I really like the format of this. And thank you for presenting the year-to-date stuff as well.
You're welcome.
Excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I'll take my cough drop.
Next, we have public information requests. Process. Ms. Wagner?
Good afternoon. Y'all better wake up after that lunch. I hope you all enjoyed and happy School Board Appreciation Month. So this month I bring to you a presentation in regards to public records request. So in our commitment to transparency, the district is committed to maintaining openness and transparency with the community. And so we strive to provide accessible and accurate information regarding district operations, data, projects, and initiatives. And our public access to records is a vital part of this commitment. So in overview, a public records request is any request from a member of the public, which can also be a nonprofit organization, as well as a for-profit organization, for access to documents or information held by the school district. These requests can relate to anything from financial records, meeting agenda items, policies, data, communications, and more. And requests must be documented and handled in ordinance with state law and district policy. So our role through the Public Relations Department is that we are the point of contact for all public records requests within the district. And the Public Relations Department is responsible for tracking, managing, and responding to these requests promptly. The team works closely with other district departments to ensure that we're collecting all that information in a timely and accurate response. And when needed, the Public Relations Department works closely with our Craven County Schools' legal partners to seek guidance. So there's different types of public records requests. We have our general request, which are requests for records related to district operations, which I stated before, which is policies, reports, and budgets. We also have special requests, which are requests for specific documents or information such as emails. It could also be text messages or contracts related to a particular project. And then ongoing requests, which are regular requests for updated data, such as school enrollment figures or district performance metrics. So there is a legal framework, which provides us the guidance to be able to make sure that we're adhering to the law, and that's governed by the North Carolina General Statute one thirty-two, six point two. And that's, we also have a board policy in regards to public records retention, release, and disposition. And the key points of the statute require our public agencies to allow inspection of these records. Specifies the public records must be available for inspection unless they are exempt by the law, and that records must be retained for specific periods, and that they are clear guidelines for their release. And what is exempt? So of course, not everything falls under public records, and sometimes that's a misconception by people. So information that is otherwise privileged based on some exemption to the Public Records Act, such as student records or personnel records, are not public records. Student data is not by state law or federal laws. Confidential employee information, any information in the personnel file, not available for inspection, for example, which is their credentials, their home address, investigative documentation, or their date of birth, medical records of employees or students, attorney-client communications, and the documents protected by the work-product doctrine, emergency response plans, public security plans, and that's the reason why you all approve those in closed session, and documents that contain trade secrets. That does not apply to us. So here's the process in which we receive the public records request. We obviously receive the public records request. Typically, that comes in via email. Sometimes we do receive them via mail. There is a tracking system in place, so they're logged and tracked for efficiency and accountability. Consultation, relevant departments are consulted in regards to gather the information that is requested. And depending on the nature of their quest, we sometimes have to, of course, seek legal guidance to make sure that we're adhering to the law. In our response, the records are provided, or the requestor is notified if the records cannot be released, because as I shared before, not everything is a public record. And just because somebody requests something doesn't necessarily mean that we have to create a record to adhere to what they're asking for. And follow-up, if needed, the Public Relations Department follows up with the requestor to ensure their satisfaction. And I know it was asked in regards to how many public records requests we had for the year twenty twenty-four. And so I wanted to share that number with you all today. So there was twenty-six requests that were submitted. And of those requests, twenty-three have been closed, and we have three that are still pending.
Any comments?
Yes, I have a comment. So I would just comment that as a prior member of the public that made public requests, sometimes on a regular basis, that as a member of the public, I never thought we have had a good process for communicating whether or not something is closed. And I had a request in several months ago for an organizational chart, which is a pretty finite piece of information. We didn't have an organizational chart, and that was okay, because I know that the statute does not require us to create documentation to support public requests. That's okay. A notification from the district would have been nice, back to my email. And so I just would ask for the public if we would make timely responses to the public, even if we can't provide the information that they need. And as a member of this board, I think it would be nice if we maybe had a quarterly update just of how many open requests are out there.
Okay, I made note of that.
Any other comments? All right. So let's move forward into policy and governance.
Thank you.
We have Policy twenty-two ten and Policy twenty-one fifty. Any comments or questions on either one of those? Okay.
It's up first.
I have some feedback on that one. So on Policy twenty-two ten, duties of the chairperson, it's Item A, and I would specifically refer to Item A, letter J. And it says, the chairperson, this would be a duty of the chairperson, that they provide direction to the board attorney outside of scheduled board meetings. I would propose that this be omitted from the policy for two reasons. One, I think that could be dangerous, depending on what the issue is. So it could be something as simple as signing a small cleaning contractor contract, but it could be something as serious as hiring and firing of associates in the district. And I just don't feel good about things like that happening without conversation with the board and consultation with the board. I check the six sister districts that I typically check. None of them have this as an add-on to their policy for this. And so my recommendation would be that we remove letter J from this.
Ms. Dacey?
So are you making a motion to amend the policy?
Yes.
And I will second the motion to strike letter J. I would also say that the original reasoning behind that was for a situation such as our standing truancy court dates. Excuse me. Which is a time when our staff have consistently asked that Mr. Gatch will be available for truancy court. And so that was what I had in mind when that language was specifically added. However, I can certainly share your concern about the areas that this could apply to if taken to its logical conclusion, that are beyond the bounds of what I was initially intending with the language. I'll also say, though, as an aside, that the situation you're describing, the hypothetical with regard to personnel, is not actually possible. Right? That's not logistically possible, because that's not how we handle personnel. With that said, I do think that we have to be careful about situations in which the board chair is acting unilaterally without consulting all members of the board, given that this is supposed to be a democratic process.
Do you think that we should keep some modification of that specific to the truancy court, since that seemed to be the specific?
I will make a specific motion with regard to that separately.
Okay.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, could we make a motion to amend that to say, after consultation with the board?
We have a motion on the table.
Yes, my motion is to strike letter J as presented here.
But we're in discussion. And I'm asking if we add it upon consultation with the board, would that satisfy your concern?
I think it still leaves it open to the chair being able to consult individually with members of the board, and so no, I'm not comfortable with that.
I would agree. That does not satisfy my concern, because I have not consulted with on numerous things recently. So that does not satisfy my concern.
So there's no way we could restrict the chair, in your opinion? If we put in the restriction, he can only give guidance after consultation with the board? You're saying that's not sufficient?
I'm saying we have a motion on the table. You're trying to make a non- You're trying to make a, a non-friendly amendment to the motion.
All right. Do I call a vote? All in favor? All opposed? Any other possible conversation on?
But that was not a vote on the policy, correct?
That was a vote.
That was just a vote on the amendment to the policy.
The amendment to the policy. All right.
I have one additional comment. So I would, I would comment with regard to striking H. That the communication that has been happening. Is problematic. In regard to the creation of, uh, public forums. So I'm not sure that striking letter H, subsection H, is actually helpful.
Are you making that a motion?
Uh-uh.
All in favor of moving forward with the. Moving forward with Policy two ten, do I have a motion to move forward policy?
Can I, can I say one more?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say my comment? Uh, I think that part of the, the reason that we find giving the board chair outside power with the attorney. Sure, we all have individual comment, conversations with our attorney and the superintendent and each other. Um, I think. It is more leaning towards the idea that, um, each individual, seven individual conversations are taking place. And then the board chair, whoever it may be, is taking the majority opinion back to the board, uh, the board attorney. And, and I think there's just a, a feeling that perhaps that that may not be the case. Um, and that's not to say that that's what's happening or what's been happening, or it's just to prevent that from happening. Um, and I think that that's just the issue of J.
Ms. Dacey.
And I would just, uh, go ahead and make a motion that the board direct Mr. Gatchell to attend truancy court at any date upon which our staff are appearing in truancy court.
All in favor, show by the raising of your right hand.
I have a question before we take a vote discussion. So you're asking for a section to be added to this for the board attorney that he attends truancy court?
You've already called for the vote.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't go through a discussion.
Again, he already called for the vote.
All right, we have all in favor. All, do you have any opposed? Two against? Motion passes. All right. Anything else for Policy twenty-two ten? Move on to Policy forty-one fifty? Any other conversation there? All right. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, show by the raising of your right hand.